Welcome to the Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting and the Finance and Operations Committee meeting for April 27th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this unprecedented time, while social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while pandemic-related restrictions imposed by Governor Wolf and any local authorities are still in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justifications for such departures. At the start of each committee meeting held while pandemic-related restrictions are in place, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary, can you talk about how the public can participate in tonight's meeting, sir? Thank you.
Yes, Board President Brown, members of the board, administrators that are here, and members of the public. Tonight, as Board President Brown said, we will have a Education and Pupil Services Committee followed by a Finance and Operations Committee. We also have a special board meeting, voting meeting, that will happen third this evening, is my understanding. I will review that process when we adjourn the other two meetings this evening, if that's okay. If you remind me, I will certainly go through that process. I know the board has made every effort to make sure that our public can participate during this unprecedented time. In allowing that to happen, we have a process in place in the school district where members of the public can send an email to committeequestions, again, committeequestions, that's plural, at upperdarbstd.org. Please provide your name, address, and your agenda item that you'd like to comment on. Again, your name, your address, and the agenda item you'd like to comment on, and the board will take that into consideration before they move anything forward, and the administration will make every effort to answer any questions that are brought forth. You can also phone in a comment or a question at 610-789-7200. Please leave your name, address, and again, the specific agenda item you'd like to comment on or question, and the board and the administration will take that into consideration prior to moving forward. Board President Brown, I'd like to update the public as we go through this evening's proceedings.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Please do at your discretion. The meeting of the Education and Pupil Services Committee will please come to order. Roll call, board secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague?
I'm present.
Mr. Des Noiers?
I am present and can hear the procedure, and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal?
I am present and can hear the proceeding.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Curry?
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Present. Thank you, sir. The following motion shall be applicable for tonight's committee meetings and the special voting meeting. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." And Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" will remove the words that reads "present at a board meeting." Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, please say "I oppose." State your name for the record. Any abstaining, please say "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carries. I will now turn over the Education and Pupil Services Committee agenda to co-chair, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. Hello, everyone. How are you? Dr. Manfree, will you please review the agenda for the Education and Pupil Services Committee tonight?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. This evening, we actually have three agenda items as well as several policies to review. The first agenda item actually has two components to it. It's on closing the achievement gap due to the pandemic, you know, gap related to COVID-19. Part A of this presentation will be presented by Mr. Robert Schwartz and Mrs. Kristin O'Neill. This is an informational item. The second component of item number one is foundations for grade, grade one. Again, this component is, as it relates to closing the achievement gap, and board action will be required for item number one. Item number two is the IXL online math program, which will require board action as well. Mr. Robert Schwartz will be presenting that. And item number three will be a presentation on two, two-way communication tools, which will require board action, and yours truly will be presenting that item. And then there are four policies, which will require board action. Policy 137.1, extracurricular participation by home education students. Policy 150, Title I comparability of services, and Policy 335, medical, family and medical leave. So with your permission, we'll get started with item number one.
All right, ahead.
Mr. Schwartz and Mrs. O'Neill?
Good evening, President Brown, Dr. McGary, members of the school board, Upper Darby School District administration and staff, and the community. I am Kristin O'Neill, and I am the curriculum supervisor for English and Language Arts for Reading, Library, and Social Studies for K-5, and I am going to be presenting information on our K-12 Summer Academy. I am going to speak specifically to the elementary piece, and then Rob Schwartz is going to speak to the secondary piece. So I'm going to start with our ramp up to the next year. The dates for this part of the academy are going to be June 23rd to July 29th. It is going to run three days a week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 to 11:30. This is an effort to ramp up the students to the next school year. The goal is to get first grade, kindergarten through fifth grade students in person, when possible, when making this effort. At this point, we have sent invitations to all kindergarten and first grade families. The flyer was sent out on April 9th, and at this point, we have about 180 confirmations. We then sent a second invitation to students in second, third, and fourth grade. We sent these invitations based on multiple data points, and at this point, we have about 120 confirmations. So we're hoping by the end of this week that we could look at our numbers, and we will hopefully be able to extend that invitation to the remaining second through fourth grade students, giving all elementary students the opportunity to attend in person for this ramp-up opportunity. We are going to focus the curriculum primarily on reading and math skills. So that's exciting. We also, for the first time, have interest in, from our pre-K families, and we are extending an invitation. We're going to have about six sections of ramping up from pre-K to kindergarten, and that invitation went out today, and we already have seven people who've confirmed, so that's exciting, too. In addition to those live opportunities or in-person opportunities, we are going to be providing enrichment sessions. Now, these sessions are going to run on the same three-day schedule, but they are going to happen in the AM and the PM, and they're going to be synchronous. They're going to be based on student interest, so we can offer some exciting things in art, music, reading, writing, STEM, phys ed, library, and like I said, that'll be in the morning and in the afternoon. And then we have a STEM camp. So the STEM camp is going to run from June 28th to July 8th. It's about seven sessions. The times are a little different. It's 8:30 to 12:15, and there are a limited number of seats. We can host about 40 students. So those are those opportunities. And then, for those of you who've been in the district, you've seen our summer scholar packets that the students have access to each year. So last year during the pandemic, we put those packets into Schoology, so the students could access them that way. Now, we're going back through all of the activities, and we are really making them more substantial. We are adding pieces where they can interact with us throughout the summer. We're including a book study where we can have several activities on the same book, and I'm even hoping that we can run some book discussions at the end of the year hosted by some of the administration. So that's exciting. We're looking forward to that. And Mr. Schwartz, he wants to run some live math sessions, too, because he wants to compete with language arts, so that's exciting, too. So at the elementary level, those are all of the opportunities that we're going to offer for the Summer Academy, and I am going to turn it over to Mr. Schwartz, so he can talk about secondary.
Can I ask, is it okay if I ask?
Can we hold the questions till the end of the presentation? Thanks, Meredith.
Good evening.
So Ms. O'Neill spoke about the elementary options. I'd like to talk about the secondary options we'll be providing this summer. So all incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students have also been invited to participate in a similar Summer Academy model that will, again, not operate from a deficit perspective of remediation and intervention, but more as a ramp up to the upcoming grade and focus on prerequisite skills needed to be successful next fall. At the middle school level, students will cycle through a three- or four-period schedule with 45-minute periods for ELA or reading, math, and an enrichment or related arts course, which includes some really exciting opportunities such as poetry, popular fiction, computer science, yoga, songwriting, and even American Sign Language. The program will be housed at Upper Darby High School due to some physical projects at the middle school, and will also be for three days a week for five weeks. Registration is currently open, and we have nearly 150 students signed up already. That registration will close on May 10th. A similar ramp-up program will be offered to incoming ninth graders at the high school. That registration is open currently as well, and will include 45-minute classes in the four core subject areas, ELA, Science, Math, and Social Studies. We have about 75 students currently are enrolled and are hoping for many more students before the registration window closes on May 10th. We will continue to offer summer school opportunities for high school students in need of credit recovery. For a variety of reasons, there may be students who need this opportunity, and we look forward to helping students along their pathway to graduation. This year, this will be offered at no cost to students and families. I can't give you enrollment information at this time, but the high school administration and staff will reach out to families as we close out the school year. We will also be trying to offer some administrative hours, live office hours between myself, you know, Ms. Kane, the ELE supervisor, to provide some engagement with students who aren't taking this up on the academy option, to do some office hours, do some math things, to do some, you know, reading things on book studies to give that option as well. So, thank you, and I think Ms. O'Neill and I will both answer any questions you guys may have.
All right. I didn't realize Ms. O'Neill was going to move to the back. I sort of thought.
Do you want me to slide?
So, we probably should have done the questions like Meredith was suggesting.
Can we slide and make room?
Kristin, no, come sit here. Kristin, she can sit here.
I'll slide over.
Amazing. Okay. All right, perfect. That worked out. Okay. So, Meredith, I believe you have a question.
Thanks, Mrs. Mitchell. Mrs. O'Neill, you said that for the second to fourth graders, the families that maybe needed the most targeted support, we approached them first. Have you sent any kind of communication for the K-1 families that, I think, as a parent of kindergarteners, I can say it's sometimes sort of hard to know whether they're on target or not. Has there been kind of any effort to kind of give an extra push to families that we know maybe need a little bit, the kids need a little more help?
The first level of invitations that we sent out definitely went to all kindergarten and first-grade families. In terms of how the students are doing at this point in time, I know that's being communicated by the classroom teachers to the families, hopefully fairly regularly, especially during this time, but since the kindergarten is on that three-report-card cycle, there have been a lot of things that have happened between the second marking period and the third marking period. There's a slew of assessments that are going to be included. So particularly to those families to detail, this is maybe something you really want to consider? No, but I think that's a great idea, and I'll certainly look into that as soon as we get back.
Great. Thank you.
And if I could just add, you know, slightly to that, I think one of the things that's really important and why we're calling this a ramp up as opposed to, you know, a summer school or remediation option, is we really believe that all students should have an opportunity to grow and move forward, whether it's through enrichment or whether through remediation. And I love the idea of, you know, everybody learns, everybody grows, that I think we can take, you know, in a summer school, especially in a smaller option with them back in the building. You know, we can take students that are here, 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 and here, and we can move everybody slowly up, and I think that's important to recognize that this academy and this summer option is not just for students who need support.
Absolutely, and I'm really excited that we're able to offer it to virtually everyone. I just thought that the, especially, we know how crucial those early years are, and I thought, since the numbers are so low, it would be great to give an extra push to the families we know need it the most.
Agreed.
Great. Thank you.
Some families also qualify for our program that we were doing every year as well. So maybe, I don't know how many families participate in that, but that could be maybe the hesitancy because they already qualify for special education needs.
EL and ESY.
EY, yeah. All right. Are there any other questions from board members?
Ms. Curry does.
Okay. Vice President Curry first, and then Deborah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I was really, I just want to say, I'm really excited that the district is able to offer these opportunities this summer, looking at the additional elementary opportunities with the enrichment sessions. I was just curious, what, how will the enrichment sessions be working? Like, I know that they're synchronous sessions, and it says scheduled throughout the day. How will that work exactly?
That's a great question. So, we're hoping that, so we have teachers who volunteered, I know, I feel like I'm looking, hi. We have teachers who volunteered, who are passionate about the content areas, which is exciting, and we're hoping to offer them in maybe one-hour increments so that they could run potentially two sessions in the morning and then two sessions in the afternoon for those three days a week for those two-week cycle. And we're doing it that way because we want, we want the students who are in the ramp-up program to have an opportunity to also take enrichment classes. So, they're going to be, they're not going to be to the extent that the ramp-up is with that two-and-a-half-hour time block, but we're definitely going, and it's going to be a shorter period of time because it's not going to be the six weeks, it's going to be the two weeks. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So, the synchronous meaning that that will be virtual options?
Correct. So, the ramp-up are the elementary kids that are coming into the building, and everything that's enrichment is going to be synchronous, so they'll still, they'll be doing it the same way that they're doing it if they're virtual at this time.
So, let me just clarify with you really quickly. So, if you do the ramp-up, but then are they still able to do the enrichment? Like, if they see something that they like, that they would like to do?
Yes, and that's why we set it up so that they would offer the same classes in the morning and in the afternoon, because all of the ramp-up classes are in the morning. That would give them a chance to get home so that they could get back onto the virtual session and participate in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you. I love how intentional that is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
You've answered one of my questions, which was, did we already have the staff in place to cover all the programs that you're offering this summer?
We have so many teachers that volunteer to help this year. We have over 75 teachers that volunteer to help, so it's amazing.
Good. And my second question is, because I like data, is what percentage of students do you is what percentage of students do you have that are enrolled in that K to one and that two-four program of the invitations that you sent out? And what's your goal for enrollment?
So we wanted everybody, especially now. But we had about 180 students. Now, that's about, so we send them out in waves because we want to make sure that we have the staff to accommodate that. We had about 180 students in K two and that's out of about 1,700. And it's the same thing for two to four so far. We have about 120 and that's out of about 1,800. So, but in all honesty, and I wasn't in this position last year, so maybe Rob could speak more specifically to this. Those numbers are better than we've ever seen. So we're in a good position right now and we're going to just keep pushing and pushing to see how many people we can get in.
If I could just add to Ms. Williams' comment. Historically, we've always attempted to do some kind of a Summer Academy program. And to your more, to your point, to those that are at home, each cohort, so if we take a ninth, a first grade group of students, a second grade group of students, you're talking about 900 first graders, 900 second graders, 900 third graders. On average across the district, that's how many kids are in a given span. So to your question, which is an excellent question, I'm sitting here taking notes and this is wonderful to hear. In many school districts, they had 180 or 120 students. They'd be like, wow, that's a lot of students. But when you think about Upper Darby, there are 900 first graders, right? So historically, these numbers are better than what we've had and we've offered summer school and support over the summer. We've tried to continue to push this over a period of time. So we definitely want to continue to make that push, but we also need some help getting parents out to feel like it's okay to send our students to this because I think there's a burnout for students and parents. But very good question, when you look at 900 kids per grade level.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I just had a question about the enrichment. I know the focus is on kids going into the next grade. So my daughter's going into eighth grade. So can you provide any other information about what the enrichment entails for an upcoming eighth grader? She may not like me asking about it, but I do want to know myself.
So different from the elementary model, the enrichment is within the period model that we're offering our middle school students. So they would be coming in for ELA, math, and then staying for, depending on enrollment, one or two enrichment periods per day. It would be about 45-minute classes. And the plan would be to create essentially a three- or four-period schedule. So you might have ELA, math, and then from your choice, it could be yoga. Or the next person, or somebody else could have poetry, math, and then reading. We're still in the process of, you know, getting the teachers the resources they need for the ideas that they have. But I think, you know, just to read off again, the ideas that the teachers have come up with have been wonderful, from poetry and computer science to songwriting from one of the music teachers at Beverly Hills, and American Sign Language from one of our teachers who has a deaf family member who's fluent. So we're really excited about those options.
You had me at computer science. Thank you.
These are all excellent opportunities. A couple of board members have some more questions. Mrs. Curry? Okay, Dr. Hag.
Not a big deal. Just to clarify that if students aren't doing the, if the elementary students aren't doing the in-person, they can still do the enrichment? Are they signing up for sort of the whole summer of enrichment? Or what are they, is it kind of, what, yeah? What do they have to sign up for?
So we haven't, we were getting through the ramp-up piece before we even sent the invitations for the enrichment part. But we're going to be very specific. They could sign up for particular courses for particular weeks. We want people to still be able to attend and work around things like vacation. To Dr. McGarry's point, there's a lot of burnout this summer, but we are encouraging any participation and that's one of the reasons to offer it that way as well.
Great. So it's sort of like one week at a time or one?
Right, like you would sign up for two weeks.
I believe they're two-week sessions.
Okay, two weeks, three days a week. But it's not like the six-week span. So you could still go to the shore and everything else like that.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. O'Neill, is there a brochure or something about this? Or how is, I know that there's been emails going out, but what is the, is there something that we can share around about the different ramp-up programs?
Not quite yet. We're still trying to process, I'm sorry, Dr. McGarry, go ahead.
I think Ms. Kelly has trusted you guys to be here and you've done an excellent job tonight. I know she wishes she could, she's in a graduate school class tonight. In, at the cabinet level, our game plan, and Mrs. Buford can certainly, if she's able to unmute, our game plan would be, once Ms. Kelly is able to solidify the staff, I think a lot of this is still based on that staffing, we often then take this product around. We find out the availability and the interest level. And then we would obviously broadcast out a brochure, letting people know what's going on, the specifics. Part of the concern that we have, I know that Christine has expressed, is she wanted to shore up staffing and she's happy that she has a number of elementary school teachers. And she wants to shore up the secondary teachers as well before she commits to getting, you know, it's hard to get teachers to commit and you don't want to get a teacher to commit, block off their schedule and you can't fill their classes. Is that fair to say?
It's a delicate balance to ask teachers to participate before you know the number of students, you know, and people commit their summer plans. So it's a delicate balance that we're moving as quickly through the process as possible just because we know, you know, we're approaching May and people have a lot of summer plans stacked.
That is correct, Dr. McGarry. That is correct. As far as the communications plan, we wanted to solidify the staffing first. But we have been very rigorous about putting it out there and it just actually just got contacted by a representative from the township who also wants to focus on their social media. So we're doing the best we can to spread the opportunity, information about the opportunity to the community. And then we'll solidify everything after staffing has been closed.
Thank you. It's really an excellent opportunity for the children in this district. Mrs. Curry?
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. So one more question, going based off of Ms. Williams' question and the question, I mean, the answer that Dr. McGarry gave. Looking at the numbers, the 180 and the 120 for the two through four, the 180 through the K through 12, how much of that do you feel will be impacted by children who are virtual and have never really come into the building this year? I know the numbers look small, but according to what we've seen with the virtual numbers, I don't know if that is really small. Is it? I'm not sure who's going to answer.
You look like you're ready to.
No, I think these, believe it or not, regardless of the pandemic, again, a great question. These numbers are kind of, you know, a little bit better than previous COVID summer numbers. So actually, I think what I'm hearing from Kristin and the team is that they're excited that they have this much interest. I think part of the other interest, I'll say this because I was involved in it previously and it's much better now. What you guys are doing is unbelievable. I mean, the presentation and the work that you guys have put together with, I know Mrs. Kelly wishes she could be here to be this. You know, compliments to you guys. I mean, this is superior to what we used to try to put together in the past. So I think you're going to have more interest, Ms. Curry. I think what we used to do in the past was not as flowery or as exciting. And I think people were sour to the old summer program. And I think this could be the beginning, moving forward, of a positive and people will be more excited than, kind of like, you know, drill and skill and coming in for the old same summer stuff. That hurt us, I think, in the past. So I think this team's done a far better job than we did in the past of that.
Thank you.
The goal truly is to give students an experience as opposed to, you know, sitting back in a classroom as a summer school would be. It's, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about, you know, exactly that. What is the experience of a child who's coming in for summer school to make them fall in love with school again? It's been a rough year for, you know, for kids. And I'll probably, I'll put myself out there now and probably get myself in trouble later in that for any students that don't, families that don't feel comfortable bringing their students in for in-person instruction, if they need help or support in math, you know, please reach out to, you know, to Ms. Kelly or Dr. McGarry and I will figure out a way to get them the math support they need if they're not comfortable coming back into the building.
And I do, just want to say, as a point of clarification from the secondary level, we're still waiting for the number of staff that we need at the high school level, not for the enrichment part of the program, but for the program where kids can still get credit recovery if for whatever reason they struggled during this semester or last semester. So we still have that credit recovery program at the high school level and we really won't know what our needs are for a few weeks in that regard.
As you can see by all the enthusiasm from the board, we do have one more question. A lot, you know, we want to make sure that we're providing for kids' needs and this is a super exciting program. So I'm sorry for the, all the questions. Mr. Des Neuerz?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I just wanted to check because some of what, you know, a few things the district has done during the course of the pandemic have been for sort of the entire community. I just wanted to check to confirm that these summer programs are only open to district students. Thank you.
Yes, that's true. And for the pre-K program, it's students who have registered in the district at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
With one small caveat, and that is that the English Learners Program is open to schools within our boundaries due to Title III federal programming. So for example, if there's a student from St. Lawrence who is an English learner, they are allowed to participate in our EL summer program.
Thank you very much, Dr. Manfred.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Ms. Curry?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Just one more question. So for the pre-K children, you said those that are registered, so coming in for kindergarten. So I know Koala Camp is still happening. Is that, I mean, Royal Koala? Sorry. Do you think, because I know that that's a full-day program. So have you thought about that at all? I mean, not just throwing a wrench into it.
Thanks. No. We were just excited that parents expressed interest at all for the pre-K option. It actually ended up happening because of siblings. They had invitations for siblings and just started sending emails thinking that we were already offering it to pre-K families. I didn't think of it in terms of competing with like a full-day daycare. But I feel like that issue that they may experience is probably the same issue that a lot of our other kids are experiencing over the summer with parents who work and have to be in full-day programs. So unfortunately, I think they're probably trying to balance which of the two options works for their family. Dr. McGarry, did you?
Yeah, so historically, again, you know, compliments to Christine because we could never get this off the ground. This is the first summer. We've talked about it summer after summer after summer. Number one, we have an issue. We start registration for kindergarten in January and February. We've gotten to the point where we go school by school now and try to make it even more intimate to try to get families that are aware to get involved. I think coming out of this, to your point, let me just bore you with one fact. We are shy. So we get kindergarten students coming in and then they go to first grade. And if the school year were like six weeks longer in first grade, although you're here that it's, we're struggling a little bit more because of the pandemic in the next presentation on Foundations. But if the school year were about six years longer prior to the pandemic, especially with kindergartens and first-grade students, they would get to a really, really good place when they left us in kindergarten and first grade. So for years, we've been trying to have a pre-K program and an after-first-grade program to like extend it, come in early and extend it so that the kids have those skills coming in the next school year. So this might be something going into next year that, and following this, that this could be a program that we could extend using the technology for longer days, for a longer period of time. That's a good point.
Thank you so much. I think we can move on to Agenda 1B, which is Foundations for Grade One. I'm very excited about this agenda item.
Okay. Sorry, I just want to pull up my notes. There we go. So for this agenda item, I am presenting a proposal for planned instruction. We are going to discuss the proposal itself, the research and collaboration that went into making this decision, the continuity of programming, the implementation plan itself, and then the cost associated with the program. So the proposal is for the implementation of the Foundations Unit One program into the first-grade core curriculum. Foundations is a multisensory, systematic, explicit program. It uses research-based materials. It addresses all of the critical foundational skills and is designed to be partnered with a core program. This is everyone's favorite visual. So I'm showing this tonight, I know you've seen it several times before, because it represents the complexity of reading. And what you're noticing is that there are several strands which are all directly related to the core standards. For tonight's presentation, I am focusing solely on the bottom three strands, which are linked with the word recognition piece. So phonological awareness is, and it's the manipulation of sound. It's anything that students can do with their eyes closed. If I ask a student to tell me how many syllables are in the word boardroom? Or what is the final sound in the word mop? Or how many different sounds are in the word ship? Those are phonological activities. Then we have decoding. Decoding is phonics. So it's when you get to the point where you're associating those sounds with print. And then we have sight word recognition. Now sight word recognition, in all honesty, is whatever words we store in our mental bank that we recognize automatically are sight words. But when we teach sight words in the program, we teach students words that don't necessarily have decodable pieces that they need to memorize, like the word should, where the sh and the d are decodable, but then that middle piece is the piece they need to recognize by sight. Why is this important? Because in our kindergarten and first-grade curriculum, although most of these strands are represented, the foundational piece is highly emphasized when we're working with our youngest readers. And if you think about it, when you learn how to speak, you do it naturally. But when you learn how to read, you need to be taught explicitly. And the same thing happens with writing. So if we have such a heavy emphasis in these three strands with the students in our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms, you can imagine what has happened over the last 14 months during the pandemic because they're learning sound manipulation either on a computer in a virtual world, which is challenging, or they're learning phonics with masks on the teacher or on themselves while they're working with letter tiles and writing. So we had to overcome a lot of obstacles. And I've been in a lot of classrooms and they're doing an amazing job, but those barriers were definitely still there. So that being said, knowing that this was going to be something we needed to pay very close attention to, we have been looking at and analyzing data all year. How is this going to affect us? What's happening with these foundational skills? And we're definitely seeing challenges in the data, primarily with our kindergarten and first-grade students. So we've been talking to administrators, coaches. We had a focus group of first-grade teachers, reading specialists, special ed, EL, everybody I could get involved in the conversation. We consulted with our AIM Institute. We consulted with the Wilson Academy, who are the creators of the Foundations program. We consulted with HMH, the inter-reading program. I talked to, as an administrator, I've been fortunate enough to collaborate with other administrators from neighboring districts. We are pretty much on par data-wise with all of our neighboring districts. They're seeing the impact mostly at that kindergarten and first-grade level in reading. And that's locally and nationally. That seems to be the trend. In addition to that, I explored what core programs they're using. And there are several neighboring districts using Foundations as a core program. Colonial, Garnet Valley, Haverford, Springfield, Downingtown, Westchester all use Foundations Level One as a core program in first grade. So we also wanted to consider what's currently happening in our district. So we are using Foundations Level K as a core program or part of the core program with our current kindergarten students. We also use it as an intervention in our MTSS process. That being said, all of those activities, routines, strategies, language, the continuity of using that both as an intervention and core in kindergarten and then bringing it to first grade is going to provide opportunities for that transfer for our students as well. But with any program, one of the key pieces is the implementation plan. And the teachers have to know what materials they're getting, how to use them in order for it to be effective. So pending board approval, we would offer our first-grade teachers about an hour and a half between now and the end of the school year to share all of the information that we're sharing with you tonight and to make sure they leave for the summer really understanding how we're going to train them and what's coming next year. And then we're developing a six-and-a-half-hour course for their contractual and service hours, which we're going to offer in a variety of ways. hours, which we're going to offer in a variety of ways to really get them ready. We'll meet with them again in August. But then the biggest piece really for Foundations, which is a program that's taught to mastery, is the sustainability piece and making sure we're having regular grade level meetings and showing teachers how to really look at data so they can plan for all the individual needs of the students in their classrooms. It's going to cost initially, the initial purchase is around $76,000. That includes the teacher kits, the student dorables, which are these magnetic letter tile boards for each student, dry erase boards, and then there are student notebooks. That could be paid for out of the ESSR fund. And then there would be a reoccurring cost of about $7, $7,500 for the notebooks that we would need to purchase each year. So that was a lot of information, but I am ready for questions.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be right back in a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, we're back. And I'm going to open it up to board members for questions. Ms. Williams has the first question.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to know if the Foundations program and that price quote that we had comes with any professional development for the teachers? And also, what about intervention?
So we currently use Foundations as an intervention in our MTSS process. So the reading specialist, special ed teachers, interventionist have been using Level K 1, 2, and 3. As far as professional development, that's not included in that cost. But my team has been trained this year, well, I'm going to age myself, but I've been teaching Foundations for 20 years, but we just went through the formal training again this year. I actually went through it today. And we are going to use our own staff to professionally develop the teachers in our district. That seems to be the most effective way to train our own teachers.
Chris, and to Ms. Williams as a follow-up quickly, if I can, Ms. Mitchell. I first visited the AIM School in Manayunk many years ago as an elementary school principal. We had the literacy coaches that we used to have in the school district and the literacy teachers that we used to have in the school district. So there was a period of time when Upper Darby was nationally known for its RTI and MTS process. And what we did here in the school district that we're rebuilding now is we had trained the trainer models. We had three and four different people trained to, we invest in them and they can then be here to provide the ongoing professional development in rewards in programs like Read Naturally and programs such as Foundations, even Great Books at one time, which is a higher-end reading program. We had professional development and training to that. So we're now trying to get ourselves back to a place where we were 12 years ago when the stimulus money was, was lost and we had to lose the, the reading teachers that we had trained in the trainer model here in the school district.
And to that point, I, I do want to note that I've been, I've done a ton of research and I, I consult with the curriculum specialist at the Wilson Academy regularly. And we are following their implementation plan, the one that's recommended by the company. We're just doing it ourselves.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Dr. Haag?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Mrs. O'Neal, do, do we use the inter-reading? That's, that starts at first grade, is that correct?
We do use pieces of it in kindergarten as well.
Okay, okay. How, how, I guess I basically want to ask you how you're going to do the impossible? How, how are we sort of going to do the catch-up and then also do the current year stuff? Like how do the two programs sort of net together? I'm sure that's probably not really an easy question to answer.
No, that's a great question.
But whatever you can tell us to sort of clarify how, how this is going to work.
Right. So Foundations is designed to be implemented. It's a 30-minute part of the core programming. And as I mentioned before, it's actually designed to be paired with another program. So it's not as complicated as it sounds because it was made for that. Inter-reading covers five areas. It does background and vocabulary. It does reader's workshop, writer's workshop, foundational skills, and then an assessment collaboration piece. So what we're going to do is, right now, we have about 90 minutes in our block for ELA, and we have that 30-minute MTSS block. We are taking the 30-minute foundational piece out of inter-reading and putting Foundations in its place. So we have been working with HMH to ensure that the other four areas are still going to be taught the way they were intended to teach, or the way we're intended to instruct, so that we're not missing any pieces when we make the switch.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from board members? I just want to say that I, I'm excited about it, but I do want to know, I mean, there, for Foundations, it's a multi-step program. So will, what, what is the, like, what does it look like as far as the whole year? What, will they be able to cover enough skills to help get students to where we need to be? And how will you accommodate students who maybe are already reading and don't need Foundations in first grade?
These are such great questions. So I, and I can certainly share the materials with you so you can see the scope and sequence. Level 1 actually starts, the first three units are a review of Level K to ensure that the students have mastered all those skills before getting into the subsequent skills. Now, there is a definite, like, it's systematic, meaning that it follows the scope and sequence of the English language. So if you look at the initial pages, which provide you with the scope and sequence, it introduces things like, it starts with letters and sounds and it goes to CVC words and then spelling CVC words, digraphs, you know, all the way through blends, and then it gets into some pretty complex syllable patterns. So because the program is taught to mastery, which is what makes it what it is, that's what makes it effective. The students, you don't really move forward into the next unit until the students have mastered the skills in the unit that you're presenting, which means that they're ready, when you move into the next unit, to build upon the skills they learned previously. In a lot of programs, you see that things in reading are taught in bursts and then revisited until we get to proficiency. But the beauty of Foundations is when the kids are finished, they are mastering those skills. So we, I, I've been working, you know, back and forth with the Wilson Academy, especially because in kindergarten this year, we're not going to get all the way through the book, you know? And I was afraid of what those implementations were going to be, you know, for students who potentially could be starting in Level 1, not having completed the last two units. But they assure me that as we progress, there is always, we always repeat. And that's the beauty of the program. So we, we do repeat. Those first units are designed that way. So we have picked apart the HMH program. We have done a skill analysis. We have ensured that we're not leaving any gaps.
Even Great Books at one time, which is a higher-end reading program.
So if, if we get to a point next year in our first year of implementation where it
We had professional development and training to that.
looks like we're not going to get as far as we need to get in the units, then my team
So we're now trying to get ourselves back to a place where we were 12 years ago when
will do the same thing. We'll go through the program to see what we're going to be needing for the following year and making sure that that's what we're starting with.
So we may be looking at something that maybe we could use ESSR funds from again next year, depending on how this year goes and where we are with the data and things like that. I just know the reading, it's, it's process. And, and for, for, you know, some children that are struggling, this is going to be a game changer, but they're going to need more, so.
No, I love the game changer. And I believe that it is one as well. And you're right. This, this is, this is going to be, this is going to be a big deal. And teaching kids to mastery, we're going to see, we're going to see a significant impact in our data. So.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neal. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you. Dr. Manfree?
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Item number two, I'd ask Mr. Schwartz to join us again. He's going to be presenting an online program, IXL. Mr. Schwartz?
And this will require board action. Good evening again, everyone. Using funds provided to the district to mitigate the impact of COVID-19, I'm asking the board for, to purchase licenses for all K-12 students for an online math program called IXL Learning. IXL Learning provides students with adaptive practice on over 100 math skills per grade from kindergarten through calculus and is aligned, they, they call it pathways, is aligned to PA Core standards, our K-8 core program envisions, NWEA MAP, a national assessment such as the SAT, ACT, and PSAT. As students practice a skill, IXL provides teachers with meaningful analytics in terms of skills mastered, time on task, student growth, and live participation. And ultimately, these ideas of adaptive practice and meaningful analytics work together to allow teachers to assign developmentally appropriate practice as part of, as part of grade-level coursework, enrichment, or to address any unfinished learning. IXL has been used successfully at the high school level for the past three years and through classroom observations, walkthroughs, and professional conversations with the high school staff. It's clear that IXL can be a great tool when used in conjunction with excellent classroom instruction. It will not minimize or change our focus on creating exciting, and yes, math classes can and should be exciting, exciting math classrooms centered around reasoning, sense-making, and problem-solving. IXL will be offered as a tool that teachers can have at their disposal to support all students all the time. The cost of the proposal is $267,000 and change for three years and includes professional development to ensure its maximum impact, that data is used effectively, and that its use is coupled with high-quality math instruction. I wanted to, I forgot that the, these presentations are PDFs. I wanted to, you know, show you around the platform a little bit. I'm happy to do that at a later date. IXL is similar to other, you know, adaptive programs that are out in the marketplace. It's used currently by Colonial as the kind of the closest school district to ours. I've worked closely with their math supervisor, Ed Merk, and how they've, you know, used it for outside of their high school. And I'm excited that we, that the funds may be there to provide this for our students. So I'm happy to answer any questions or, you know, explain the platform a little more.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Are there any questions from board members? Dr. Haag?
Can you say a little bit more about how you envision teachers using it so that? Yeah, I'm, I'm just not totally clear on how it's going to be integrated with everything else that we have.
Sure. So let me talk first about the high school level. It doesn't have kind of a core curriculum, but they're, they're kind of building their course based on the standards and as they go and how they currently use it. You know, especially with the use of Chromebooks and the, and being able to go one-to-one, students will be able to have adaptive practice as opposed to that kind of typical, here's a worksheet, do your work, show your work on the board. But to have practice online that A, gives them instant feedback, B, gives our teacher instant analytics, and C, when I talk about adaptive practice, you know, one of the models I think teaching has to get away from is the idea that everyone's going to do the same homework problem, do 1 to 47 odd. And what's nice about IXL is we can all be working on a similar skill, you know, solving systems of linear inequalities. Dr. Haag, we'll, we'll go, you know, algebra 2. But on that skill, one student can be working with one level of complexity. And in the same skill, another student can be doing more complex problems with the same skill. So it really tiers the content for students and differentiates the content for students within the same skill, which I think is really important when we're using it in conjunction with classroom coursework. As far as enrichment and remediation and intervention, there's great tools. So we have built into the elementary schedule, we have 30 minutes of math intervention built into the elementary schedule K to 5. This would be a component of that so they can get additional practice on, again, work that they're doing, you know, typically in their classroom. It can be work from, you know, if they've just taken, you know, a test before that they need, you know, to solidify, we can push other kids, you know, forward, you know, and go deeper and more complex into certain pieces. So there's a lot of ways it can be used. Can I say, you know, at this point that I know exactly how it's going to be used every year? Probably not. But knowing that we have three years head start at the high school, working with conjunction with the professional development and the instructional experts at IXL, I see it being an excellent complement to what's happening in our classrooms currently.
I think you probably already know, already can guess my concern. My concern is that it's, you know, I know that our teachers have worked so hard to learn these, these such as the SAT, ACT, and PSAT. As students practice a skill, IXL provides teachers with meaningful analytics in terms of skills mastered, time on task, student growth, and live participation. And ultimately, these ideas of adaptive practice and meaningful analytics work together to allow teachers to assign developmentally appropriate practice as part of grade-level coursework, enrichment, or to address any unfinished learning. IXL has been used successfully at the high school level for the past three years, and through classroom observations, walkthroughs, and professional conversations with the high school staff. It's clear that IXL can be a great tool when used in conjunction with excellent classroom instruction. It will not minimize or change our focus on creating exciting, and yes, math classes can and should be exciting, exciting math classrooms centered around reasoning, sense-making, and problem-solving. IXL will be offered as a tool that teachers can have at their disposal to support all students all the time. The cost of the proposal is $267,000 and change for three years, and includes professional development to ensure its maximum impact, that data is used effectively, and that its use is coupled with high-quality math instruction. I forgot that these presentations are PDFs, I wanted to, you know, show you around the platform a little bit, and I'm happy to do that at a later date. IXL is similar to other, you know, adaptive programs that are out in the marketplace. It's used currently by Colonial, is kind of the closest school district to ours. I've worked closely with their math supervisor, Ed Merk, and how they've, you know, used it outside of their high school, and I'm excited that the funds may be there to provide this for our students. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or, you know, explain the platform a little more.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Are there any questions from board members? Dr. Haig?
Can you say a little bit more about how you envision teachers using it, so that... Yeah, I'm just not totally clear on how it's going to be integrated with everything else that we have.
Sure. So, let me talk first about the high school level. It doesn't have kind of a core curriculum, but they're kind of building their course based on the standards and as they go, and how they currently use it. Especially with the use of Chromebooks and being able to go one-to-one, students will be able to have adaptive practice as opposed to that kind of typical, here's a worksheet, do your work, show your work on the board, but to have practice online that A, gives them instant feedback, B, gives our teacher instant analytics, and C, when I talk about adaptive practice, you know, one of the models I think teaching has to get away from is the idea that everyone's going to do the same homework problem, do one to 47 odd, and what's nice about IXL is, we can all be working on a similar skill, you know, solving systems of linear inequalities, Dr. Haig, we'll go, you know, algebra two, but on that skill, one student can be working with one level of complexity, and in the same skill, another student can be doing more complex problems with the same skill. So it really tiers the content for students, and differentiates the content for students within the same skill, which I think is really important when we're using it in conjunction with classroom coursework. As far as enrichment, and remediation, and intervention, there's great tools. So we have built into the elementary schedule, we have 30 minutes of math intervention built into the elementary schedule, K-5, this would be a component of that, so they can get additional practice on, again, work that they're doing, you know, typically in their classroom. It can be work from, you know, if they've just taken, you know, a test before that they need, you know, to solidify, we can push other kids, you know, forward, you know, and go deeper and more complex into certain pieces. So, there's a lot of ways it can be used. Can I say, you know, at this point, that I know exactly how it's going to be used every year, probably not, but knowing that we have three years head start at the high school, working with conjunction with the professional development and the instructional experts at IXL, I see it being an excellent complement to what's happening in our classrooms currently.
I think you probably already can guess my concern. My concern is that it's, you know, I know that our teachers have worked so hard to learn these more, what's the word I'm looking for, more interactive, more comprehensive, you know, teaching techniques, and so, as you've said, the emphasis on reasoning, the emphasis on sense-making, the emphasis on concepts, not just procedures, and so I'm concerned that this could encourage a little bit of backsliding to what both teachers and students tend to be more comfortable with.
Sure.
And so I'm worried about having it sort of in every class, every day, kind of thing, and I have seen this tool used more extensively in other schools, and I really worry about what it's, I worry about that.
I think that's a fair concern, and I think, like you said, what students often thinks they need, or perhaps what teachers think that they need, may not always be exactly what they need. But I think there is, A, some value in giving them tools in which, you know, that they need, and twisting it so that it serves the greater purpose, and what, you know, what myself as the math supervisor recognizes what's important, and I think there are ways to twist IXL to do that. I will say the other piece is, this is not core instruction. It is not meant to be used as part of our 60-minute math lesson at the elementary, our 50-minute math lesson at the middle, and our 80-minute math lesson at the high school. It is a tool for student practice of skill, but it is not an instructional resource, the way some of these other adaptive programs are. You know, in the past, we used, you know, DreamBox at the middle school level, it was more instructive. There are programs like ST Math, I don't know if you're familiar with that one, but ST is another one that is more instructive and meant to be part of an instructional kind of program for kids. This is not. This is adaptive practice to help solidify skills, but I've come too far in my math journey to kind of backslide into, you know, moving away from kind of that discourse that you and I know is so valuable.
As long as you keep leading the charge, then. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? Ms. Buford?
Director Neal has a question.
All right. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Ms. Buford and Ms. Mitchell. My question is revolving around, how are we tracking how many teachers use this, and whether it's actually, you know, being used inside the classroom by the teachers? Like, we're giving them professional development, but then, you know, I see a lot of these programs come over and we approve them, but how are we tracking how much they're being used and how effective they are in our district?
So that is, you know, part of my role as the, you know, district supervisor, to make sure, not only that they're being implemented, that they're being implemented often, and they're being implemented in a meaningful way. The way the system is set up, and I've been doing this for the past three years, myself and the high school department chair regularly meet to discuss data, and regularly go over the teacher analytics as far as how much they're using, and the information that it provides me as the system administrator, you know, tells me by teacher and by class, how often they're using it, if it's being used, you know, what IXL considers to be an appropriate amount of time, what IXL considers to be too much time, but that is part of my responsibilities, you know, to make sure that that, you know, whole-scale analytics is being done. As far as student rostering, it will be done through our e-school system, and then will be placed, you know, if approved, placed on ClassLink, is another link that way, and the students would go through, there's no separate login, it's a ClassLink Google, you know, sign-on option.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Are there any questions from board members in the room? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
This was a great presentation.
Dr. Haig, we can definitely talk more.
Dr. Manfree, are you switching seats?
No, I'm just going to grab a keyboard.
Okay. Okay, so up next is agenda item number three, online two-way communication tools.
Good evening, Mrs. Mitchell, and members of the board, members of the public. This evening, I have the pleasure of presenting to you online two-way communication tools. We have, in the district, heard time and time again, the need for us to be able to communicate more effectively with our constituents, in particular, those who may speak another language other than English. And in our quest to be able to communicate with them more effectively, we have found two platforms that I would like to present to you this evening, one being called Talking Points, and the other, a subsidiary of the current communication system that we use, Blackboard, called Blackboard Reach. So, again, I'm sorry, this is the agenda. What is a two-way communication tool? What is Talking Points? Thank you. So, a two-way communication tool increases family engagement. As you all know, research shows that the more a family is engaged with the educational program, the more likely the student is going to find success, and student achievement, of course, will then follow. The interesting thing about two-way communication, online communication tools, is that it allows families to communicate back to the sender, back to the school district, whether that be a teacher, an administrator, or a central administrator. Currently, most of our communication tools, or approved communication tools, other than email, are one-way. These online communication tools enable parents to communicate back to a mass parent link or text message sent through Talking Points, which we find is a good way to increase parent and community engagement. These tools also allow messages to be sent directly from the school district to families' cell phones in the form of a text message, and therefore, enabling us to send instantaneous messages to them. So what is Talking Points? Talking Points is a nonprofit organization whose goal is to increase communication specifically between school districts and other organizations, and to families of limited English proficiency. There is a free version of Talking Points, and there is also a paid version of Talking Points. I'm here to present to you the paid version of Talking Points. They offer, in translation, over 100 languages. Features of Talking Points include the ability for Talking Points to set up administrator and teacher accounts, unlimited teacher messaging, as well as school administrator messaging. I think something that's very important is an analytical dashboard that our principals and our central administrators can view to determine how many messages are being sent out, how many messages are being read, how many messages are being returned to the sender. It offers daily syncing with our current student information system, and Talking Points will support the implementation, and provide us with continued assistance. Blackboard Reach, as I mentioned before, is a part of a tool that we're already using. Blackboard Reach is part of Blackboard and Parent Link, and its features are modern chat, which is in reference to text messaging. So, when we do a message to our community, if we click the box that indicates the message will go to cell phones, we can do that. It will go to any device. It also will provide us the opportunity to email and have push notifications to our families. It provides administrative oversight, similarly to the way that Talking Points do through a dashboard analytics. It will integrate with our student information system on a daily basis, the way Talking Points will, and Blackboard Reach is providing continuous development to our administrators and teachers, and we believe this company is on the cutting edge of communication. By the way, Blackboard Reach will communicate in any language that is listed in our home language demographic page. So if the home language happens to be Bengali, the message will go to the family in Bengali, and the family will be able to communicate back to the sender, excuse me, in their home language, and that message will be translated for the original sender into English. So we're communicating back and forth to one another in our own language, and it gets translated for us. A side-by-side comparison, you'll find that they're very similar, except for two very distinct differences that I think are very important. Talking Points would be much more expensive for the entire school district. We were proposing simply for our 1,300 English learners at a cost of $10,400. Blackboard Reach would provide us this communication tool for all of our students at a cost of It says $15,000 up there, but the superintendent gave me a last-minute update, $13,370. It would be implemented for the 2021-2020 school year, and it would be paid for through the curriculum and instruction budget, because we see this as an extremely important tool for the school district moving forward, and not a one-time buy, so we're not going to ask to use SRF funds. I know that was fast, I'm happy to try and field any questions that you may have.
Craig, just before the board asks those questions, another feature that I was worried about with both of these pieces of technology is the use of data for families. Blackboard Reach will not require data usage for families on their phones if these communications come out, and Blackboard also saves the communications for student records and information, which I think is another important feature that Talking Points does not seem to provide the same way that Blackboard does, that's already integrated in our system, and so I think that's an important topic as well.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm assuming you want us to sort of, after the presentation, sort of decide which one we want to go with, just so that board members maybe have that in their frame of, there's a lot of questions.
So with that in mind, I will remind you that we already are using Blackboard. Blackboard Reach would be an extension of that. The cost would be about $13,000. Talking Points would be new to the school district, although there is a free version. The Talking Points cost would be a little over $10,000. The district, the administration, would recommend, after carefully researching both of these items, Blackboard Reach.
Okay. All right. So at this time, just before we start the questions, Dr. McGary, can you just remind the public how they would participate in tonight's meeting, because after this next agenda item, it's going to be public comment time, or questions?
Sure. You can participate this evening by sending in a comment or question to committee questions, again, plural, committeequestions@uprdrbstd.org. Please provide your name and address, as well as the specific agenda item you'd like to comment on, or leave a question. You can also phone it in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Same process, please leave your name and address, and the specific agenda item you'd like to comment on, and we will do our best to answer your questions, and provide insight prior to the board moving forward, any item.
Thank you. Ms. Buford, can you help me with who is up first?
Absolutely. We have a question from Director, Dr. Haig.
Thank you, Ms. Buford, and thank you, Dr. Manfree. This is really exciting, and I think, I have a feeling that there's going to be a lot of positive comments, because this is clearly something that we really need. My first question is a relatively simple one. If we go with Blackboard, does this also tie us into the Blackboard webpage service, the web services?
This is an add-on to the service that we're already using with Blackboard.
Okay, but it was my understanding that there's some consideration that we may not stick with Blackboard for our web services, or may or may not.
We have two years remaining on the contract, and we would be looking at, obviously, an RFP moving forward. Right now, we feel time is of the essence, do we put out $10,000 for 1,300 students, or this, given the UpRdRB Rising communication that we've had, and hearing from parents? And really, in a real clarity of this, the central office team was really going to bring forward tonight Talking Points, and then we learned about Blackboard Reach, and we investigated that, and we wanted to show you that we were looking at both items, and truth be told, if Blackboard Reach was more readily made known and available to us at the time, it's really new, that we would probably have brought one product forward to you to improve that communication across the school district. I understand the question, but we are going to actually do an RFP soon. I know Ms. Buford has her hand up, I know that they are engaged, Mr. Holinsky and Ms. Buford, go ahead, Aronda.
Right. We're engaged in some investigation of other alternatives, just for ease of accessibility and some ADA concerns. Mr. Holinsky and I, the Director of Technology, have looked into it, and we're looking at costs and comparing what we have with what we would like to have, and we're also discovering that we probably need to bounce it back to Blackboard to give them an opportunity, because they've also introduced us to some other options. So once we, you know, are able to consolidate it more, and bring Dr. McGary all the way up to speed, because we haven't gotten enough research to bring him into the picture fully, even though he's aware of what we're, you know, engaged in, we will definitely bring it to the board with his approval.
Yeah, and just for clarification, I met with Ms. Buford and Mr. Holinsky, but only met with them in regard to Talking Points, and this really was a last-minute change to the agenda, because Mr. Salerno, and Ms. Kelly, and Dr. McGary, when you go into Parent Link, a pop-up window came up and said, hey, listen, guys, we have a new product, and we hit the brakes very quickly, and made a shift in gears to present both products to you. But this really was about the idea of being able to have instantaneous translation through Talking Points, and when we found out that Blackboard Reach allows the same thing, and two-way, thank you very much for that, and when we found out Blackboard Reach offers the same thing, we felt it was a nice marriage between what we're already doing with Blackboard, and what we could be doing. This is very exciting, I think.
So to clarify, then, is Talking Points not fully two-way?
Talking Points does offer two-way communication, Dr. Haig, that's a great question. The most important difference is that Talking Points does not allow us to send email communication. It only allows for text message communication, and it will cost the recipient whatever their plan is, whereas Blackboard will not.
Those are clearly pretty big advantages. And then, the list, the 100 languages that Talking Points includes, are there gaps between our needs and what they offer in terms of languages? I know we're close to that 100.
Honestly, I would have to say, I'm not 1,000% sure of this answer, but I don't think there are gaps. That said, we have been told by Blackboard Reach that they will be able to translate in whatever language is in the field of home language in our demographic page.
Which is really exciting. That's really, really wonderful. And then the last question is, I'm assuming then, because Talking Points would only include the designated ELL students, that that would sort of be a little bit of an inconvenience, at least, that there would be sort of separate communications to the ELL families, as opposed to just being able to sort of always hit everyone all the time?
Which brings a very important, another very important distinction, and that is that Talking Points would only be used at the building level for teachers and building-level administrators, whereas Blackboard Reach will enable all administrators in the district to use the communication tool.
That was another one of my questions, and actually, I realize I have one more, and I apologize to my fellow board members for monopolizing so much time, but, and the language choice, is that something that the parents are able to just identify, or we have to identify it for them?
Well, we're getting into a different area, but it's important that you asked the question. So when a family registers with UpRdRB School District, they register by, there's a question called a home language survey, where they have to indicate any other language that's spoken in the home. That triggers automatically us to screen those kids, those students... That triggers automatically us to screen those kids, those students, for possible EL services. So whatever that home language survey indicates, that's what our registrars put into the home language field.
Got it. Thank you.
So two follow-up points to that. That has been somewhat of a controversial topic because there are parents and families who don't want to be communicated in their home language. So Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, and the team, and Aronda have to navigate that. And there are opportunities to navigate that. It's still as part of the ELL requirements and it's mandated that you do the home language survey when students register. Second point that you brought up that I want to make sure that I know I heard in my Upward RB Rising breakout sessions, which was, "Dr. McGary, I'm tired of having kindergarten at the kindergarten center, a first grader in a first-grade building, a sixth grader, a high school kid, and every one of your communications is coming out from a teacher or somebody differently." What we discovered through this pandemic is for a short period of time, there was a lot of free stuff. And people were trying to get a hold of any way they can using a lot of the free stuff. And my frustration with my team has been, we have to stop allowing so much free stuff to get used because we have to condense and consolidate communication so that we have like as much of a single sign-on as possible. We can't have parents in this community having to sign in and navigate four different communication tools. So what I most like about this is we can continue to move forward with this concept of Schoology, Blackboard, like there's a communication process that we've been trying to, and this also works with the app that we have with Blackboard. So it will be a part of that app on your phone. We really have to work toward protecting, selfishly, me and Aronda, from having to navigate 60, 70 different types of communication going out there and who's doing what and how's it happening. And our job, my job, is to make sure the policies are being followed about communication and social media and how we navigate those things. So as frustrating as it might be for some, that it seems somewhat controlling, we've got to be careful and mindful of student records. We've got to be careful and mindful of what's been approved, how's it being saved, who communicated that. And so I do like the concept that we're moving potentially in this direction. To be honest, I wasn't overly thrilled, Greg will tell you, with the Talking Points at first because I worry about several text messages coming through to one parent at a time, too. But I understood his desire, rightfully so, and the team's desire to solve that problem. They were 100% correct to solve that problem. We're just happy that Blackboard has this product as well.
I'm pretty excited about it also. I just hope that we can still resolve. I know that a lot of us are not thrilled with the website at this point. And I'm just hoping that we can still, that this doesn't hinder our efforts to improve on that front also.
Actually, the day that, you know, so the day that we had the conversation about Talking Points, Aronda and Bob Holinsky were actually on a phone call that day talking about the website. I had walked into Christine Kelly's office and said, "Look, I would rather us do an RFP and try to find an all-encompassing website communication process that does this instead of going and buying one-off tools and see if all one can do that." Just so happened, Aronda and Bob were having a similar conversation at this time. I was like, "Look, if we want to do this just for this year, okay. But I don't want to be in the habit of having several different items, trying to navigate one piece," to your point, which was the conversation of the website as well. So my point is, we agree.
Yeah. I just want to echo what Dan just said, that the goal of his communication strategy is to create a suite for parents so that, like you said, there's not like a ton of apps on your phone. So one suite and then offshoots from that suite. So we're working at it. And yeah, we realize that there are weaknesses with the website in terms of accessibility, finding things. We're working on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. I think Mr. Des Neuyers is next.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. So I have a couple of questions around privacy. And Dr. Manfree, I'm not sure whether these are more appropriate for you or Dr. McGary or possibly our solicitor. But my questions concern, you know, we engage with different, the district engages with different providers. And we engage in communications with our students and families. And I'm wondering, you know, what portion of communications are covered under educational privacy rights and what are not? So if we send, you know, a message out and we send a communication through email, you know, at what point does it cease to be a covered, when does it cease to be protected student data? And what, what means do we have to verify that our providers are compliant with the federal education privacy laws?
You're right. I will defer to Mr. Verma.
All right. So...
And this could be dealt with more in-depth on its own. So don't feel you have to give a lecture on this topic right now.
I'll try not to. So there are a couple of different issues there to unpack. So the first, you seem to be asking whether or not, by merit of sending things through a particular means of transmission, whether it's email, text, or otherwise, whether it somehow removes the protection of federal law. And the answer there is no. You had another question about whether we have an ability or a duty to police our contractors. And that answer, again, is no. What we have to have is a contractual obligation for our contractors to follow the requirements of federal law. So we don't necessarily have to go and check to make sure that their servers or that their people in their service are doing what they're supposed to. But we need to make sure that the language of our contract with them says, here are the things they're supposed to be doing. I think there was something else in there as well, but I...
That's, I think that's, those are the main points. Thank you very much. Very helpful.
And just so we're clear, too, one final point, I think, Neil, you know this well since you're really the ombudsman from the liaison position for the board. Policy 901 is, you know, in place, public relations objectives, district use of social media. So we also have clear with our staff, as Kyle, I think, was talking about too, maybe one of your questions, that our staff know that when they are communicating via email or communicating using these devices, there's a responsibility that you technically do create student records when you mention a student's name or you're talking about a student. And so that's obviously something that we keep in mind as well.
And Dr. McGary, I believe that that policy in particular is one of the mandated trainings that our staff goes through at the beginning of the year.
Thank you all very much for your answers. Very helpful.
Great questions. Mr. War Savage.
Thank you very much, Director Mitchell. I had one comment and three questions, and they're all brief. The comment is, "I'm really glad to see that Blackboard in particular is being considered for this evening." And I draw attention to our EL population and our EL district fam who wants to be more included and feel like, as though they are included, which they are, in everything that is going on and communicated back and forth in the district. And I think this goes a long way to bridging that, that, any kind of, you know, misunderstandings that could come from things that can't be properly translated and just bringing them closer to the district family. So I appreciate that. The three questions that I did have were, regardless if we keep Blackboard in the future or not, I wanted to know if the fee for this particular add-on is a one-time fee? And if not, how often does it recur? The second question that I had was, I was curious about the kind of language database that this particular add-on uses. Are they using a Google database? Did they create their own? And my third question is, does the application allow for the ability of at least administrators to say, apply their own definitions to some translated terms or idioms? Because, I mean, I speak several different languages, Japanese, French, Korean, et cetera. And there are certain idioms that don't properly translate when they are transliterated. And sometimes misunderstandings come from that. So how, would the administration be prepared to deal with those issues as they arise? Otherwise, really awesome presentation. I loved it.
Thank you, Mr. War Savage. I think I can handle the first question and the third question. I don't know who's going to handle the second question. But the first question is, it's not a one-time fee. It's an annual fee. And I believe the fee would change if we went away from Blackboard as our website provider. That said, I do believe that many, this is coming to light, obviously, more and more every day as we go through these difficult times, there are many companies out there that offer similar opportunities. Question three is no. I do not believe administrators will have the ability to change within the confines of one particular language to suit what they are trying to get across. We do realize, even through the use of Google Translate at times, that they don't translate perfectly. The hope is that the translation comes across as well as it possibly can and that the two-way feature provides the recipient the opportunity to ask the sender clarifying questions. And as far as the database is concerned, I don't know if anyone, I don't know the answer to it. It's not a Google database. They created their own database, I assume.
Well, I guess, just remember, too, the database where this information is coming from is our student information system. So it really sinks into that. If it's storing our data somewhere off, Blackboard already has access to that. They're already, we are in contract with Blackboard. That's not going to change. Meredith Haig, you're shaking your head.
Yeah. That's, sorry, Dan, just to clarify, that's not the data that I was really asking about. I was literally asking about the database that the application uses to do all that's translating.
Yeah. I think they may have created their own. I don't know that it's Google at all. We can find out. They did not provide us that information. Who does that?
I believe it's proprietary. So they have created themselves.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But we'll find, I'll find out. The other piece is the cost. I did provide the board in last week and then in the content, the costs. I know, Greg, did you want to take that or do you want me to? The initial cost, there's an initial cost to the board and to the public, you can see. It's about $13,370. There was a conversation that was held today prior to the meeting. They made some adjustments in the cost for us, given student information. There's a maintenance fee of $1,800 and then a premier service fee for $500. So the annual costs after that upstart are also $1,275 for optional services.
I believe Ms. Curry has a question.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. First of all, as a co-chair of the Education and People's Services Committee, I just want to applaud the team for acting so quickly. I remember having a lot of questions about Talking Points and then, boom, we get another service. So thank you so much for really doing the research on this. I do have a quick question and it is about the website in connection with Blackboard Reach. And I know that President Brown has talked about in other sessions about, through the Tech Committee, about having the translator on the front of the homepage of the website. Can Blackboard Reach do that? And I didn't, I was looking in there, but you know how you can click. And in some other websites we've seen where it has that translation piece connected. And I was just thinking, because Blackboard has a website piece that we have, if that translation piece could be a part of the website and the front page, the homepage?
Yeah. I do not know the answer to that question, Vice President Curry, but I will try to get the answer for you and provide it to you.
Okay. It looks great, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Curry, I think that Google Translate is actually at the very, on the homepage at the top. In fact, I just translated it into Bengali at the top right corner, translator. Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about. So maybe, I didn't realize that that was on there. So thank you for bringing that to my attention, Ms. Mitchell. But I'm thinking, because Blackboard Reach is, would be the product and they're the translation product, I was wondering if that was something that came along with their product. So that was the question. But thank you for pointing that out.
I was trying to figure out what the question was. So thank you. Now I understand. Are there any other questions from board members?
Can I just jump in and say that this is exactly where Damian's question becomes relevant? Because if they were using their own, if they were using Google's translation services, then whatever, you know, whatever they did would be the same as what we already have as far as the website is concerned. And if they have their own, then hopefully they're working on improving it and who knows, maybe it'll be better, but I have no idea.
I think they are upgrading their technology to make it more like how communication happens via Facebook, Instagram, and that's what this chat feature looks like. So we will definitely get a question back. And maybe, I think, Ms. Curry, too, to your point, there could be an opportunity for that feature to be on the website prominently, to communicate, to go to that versus, because that would be an interesting piece, too. We are having a tendency to only look about it, and that's why I run into it like this to Greg. Sometimes we only think about us to them, but how are they going to get to us on this site, too? And so we'll be looking at how this can be displayed and so that, to my teacher, my classroom, I can communicate with you, a message with you in my language versus we're only worried about getting to you. We have to make sure we get that two-way, I think, to your point. And we'll find out where the database is and where that's coming from. That's my fault. I should have thought of having that question prepared.
I was presenting, so I'll take the blame.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Brown?
Dr. Manfree, I think you'll find that the Blackboard Reach has their own proprietary database. I mean, on their website, a lot of websites subscribe to the Google Translate so that they have some sort of translation, you know, in order to compete. But if they're marketing Blackboard Reach as a separate product to compete with like the Talking Points, they certainly have their own database in order to have it as a service that they're selling as a separate piece.
We'll make sure we get that information to you before the board meeting.
All right. Are there any other questions or concerns from board members about Blackboard Reach? Okay. Seeing none right now, I'm going to go on to agenda item number four and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Des Neuyers to go over policies that are for board action.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. There are, there are changes to two policies and changes to attachments to one policy for consideration during this meeting. The three policies impacted are Policy 137.1, extracurricular participation by home education students; Policy 150, Title I comparability of services; and Policy 330, family and medical leaves without FF-CRA attachments. The change has to do with attachments. So summary of the changes to these policies and attachments is as follows. And I will make a note that as the district is reviewing and updating policies, gender-neutral language is being introduced. For Policy 137.1, this policy is being changed based on changes to U.S. law that allow home education, i.e., homeschooled students, to join the Reserve Officer Training Corps, sorry, the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, JROTC, unit of the school entity in whose enrollment area the student resides. Policy 150, the language on method of determination has been removed because method of determination is now limited and automatically set up in the online tool used to create the comparability form on the Pennsylvania Department of Education's website. And finally, Policy 335, the attachments to Policy 335 related to pandemic-related emergency sick leave and emergency family leave provisions of the families... and emergency family leave provisions of the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act, otherwise known as FF-CRA, are being removed since district employees can no longer initiate such leaves. Anyone wishing to review the three attachments can look up the currently active policy that has the three attachments. The three attachments will be removed if the policy change is approved at the May board meeting. There are no other changes to the text of Policy 335. That concludes my summary of changes for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Des Neuer's. It's very helpful. Are there any questions or concerns from board members about the three policies? Ms. Buford? Anyone?
None from the board, but I do see that Dr. McGarry would like to—I mean, Dr. Manfree would like to speak.
Go ahead, Dr. Manfree.
Yes, Mrs. Mitchell, I noticed this evening that as part of Policy 137.1, junior ROTC was mentioned. And I just want to give the board an update as to where we stand with our application to Fort Dix and the junior ROTC program here at Upper Arby High School. I've reached out to Mr. Chris Walker and Brenda Gainley at Fort Dix, and we are on what's called the Order of Merit List. If you remember, to the board, I did a presentation asking for permission for this to be included in our Course Selection Guide in November of 2019. Seems like 100 years ago. It was approved by the board in—at the December 2019 board meeting, and we made application in February of 2020. We are on the Order of Merit List, along with, I'm told, 250-some other schools. I have been attempting to get in touch with the Brigadier Commander at Fort Dix to talk more about Upper Arby High School and what we have to offer the junior ROTC program. At—at this point, to no avail. As you can imagine, it's difficult to get in touch with such people. But I will continue to try, and I just wanted to give the board an update that we are still on the list. There's no reason for us to have to reapply from one year to the next, and that I will stay in touch with them for as long as it takes to get a program here at Upper Arby High School.
Thank you so much for that update, and I am assuming it's a policy revision recommended by PSBA and something that hopefully we'll need sooner than later. Are there any other comments or questions from board members about the policies? Okay, seeing none, I think we are at the time for our public comments. Dr. McGarry, do you just want to review that real quick? Although I'm not sure—do we have any public comments, Ms. Buford?
We have not received any.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to turn the meeting back over—no, first, we're going to review the agenda items, then I'll turn it back over to President Brown. Dr. Manfree?
Thank you. Our first agenda item was closing the achievement gap related to COVID-19. The Item 1A, Summer Academy, was informational. And Item 1B, Foundations for Grade 1, is—board action is required.
Is everyone okay with moving foundations to the board—the board meeting in May?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Item number two was the presentation by Mr. Schwartz. And I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Neill and Mr. Schwartz presented item number one. Item number two was the presentation by Mr. Schwartz on IXL, the online math program, and board action is required for that item as well.
Are board members comfortable moving the IXL program to a vote in May?
Yes.
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 Item number three was the online two-way communications tools presented by—by me. And two things need to happen with this item. The first is board action to move one of the two forward, and the second is to decide which of the two we are moving forward.
Okay, so maybe I'll just go around the room and online and just ask which one you would like to move forward, because I think we definitely need this tool. So just go down the line, if that's okay. Meredith?
I—I'm comfortable with Blackboard Reach.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Blackboard.
On Blackboard?
Blackboard.
Blackboard Reach.
Okay, and those of you who are online, Mr. Neal?
I am comfortable with whatever the district, you know, decides.
They—they're recommending Blackboard?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Des Neuer's?
I'm comfortable with Board Reach. Thank you.
Mr. War Savage?
I am comfortable with Blackboard.
And Mr. Fields?
Uh, Blackboard's fine.
All right. Well, it sounds like we have consensus. I got everyone, right? Okay. All right, so it'll be Blackboard. And if you could just get us an update on those few questions that are still outstanding, I think that would be helpful for the May board meeting.
Yeah, just—just for clarity, I know—I know we moved that forward for consensus. There's still action that has to take place for the public. Tonight was not a—a vote to approve that, just to be clear. You were just taking consensus to move that forward. So before we take action on it, we'll provide some clarity at the next board meeting.
Great. And the last item is the policies for board action at the May meeting. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
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 Well, I think that concludes the Education and People's Services meeting. I'll turn it back over to President Brown. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Manfree, Mr. Schwartz, and Ms. O'Neill, for all the great presentations and information tonight. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Education and People's Services Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. We'll take five so we can exchange seats for finance and operations. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. The meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee will please come to order. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to Co-Chair, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Mr. Rogers, please begin with an overview of your agenda items for this evening.
Tonight, we have three agenda items. All three are—would be considered board action. The first agenda item is the 2021-2022 Proposed Final Budget. So in compliance with the Act 1 timeline, I'll present the proposed general fund budget, and we'll ask the board to consider this to be moved forward for approval at the May 11th board meeting. The second agenda item, Mr. Marvin Lee will discuss improving the indoor air quality through use of the federal ESER funds. So this item, Marvin will go through the idea of how we plan to utilize future ESER funds in order to improve the air quality in—in our school districts and replace our existing equipment, HVAC equipment. This will also require board action. It'll be more of a board action to move—give us the authorization to continue in the process and continue researching how we best go through this process. Item number three—or agenda item number three is the second—or the policies, which is also board action. There's three policies tonight. 004, membership; 810.1, drug and alcohol testing for covered drivers; 810.3, school vehicle drivers. Mr. Fields, if you don't mind, I'll jump right into agenda item number one.
Please do. Sounds exciting.
So as I said, our first agenda item tonight is the 2021-2022 Proposed Final Budget. So first, let's just—we'll review past, present, and future. So we'll go through the Act 1 timeline. And here are the two items that we've really passed through thus far publicly. So on November 24th of 2020, the—we presented at a committee meeting the preliminary budget versus an accelerated opt-out presentation, which was to consider whether the board would stay within the index or go through the preliminary budget. On December 1st, the board approved the resolution not to exceed the 3.8 adjusted index for the 2021-22 fiscal school year. So what that means is the board, when they approved that resolution, decided that we would go down the path of the accelerated opt-out, and the board would not increase taxes above and beyond the adjusted index of 3.8. So here are the next steps following this meeting. On May 11th, we're going to ask the board to adopt the proposed final budget that we'll present here tonight. On May 11th, at that presentation—or when it's approved, it will also be made available to the public in PDE 20—Form 2028, which is then be available for public inspection, which has to be done 30 days prior to the final adoption of the final budget. We then will have our committee meeting on May 25th, where we'll have another committee meeting discussion. And what we'll do there is discuss any changes that may happen from now to that point and bring the board and public up to date with any kind of issues that may come from the state or any other kind of funding sources or changes to our expenditures. On June 5th, no later than June 5th, we'll post an advertisement for a notice of intent to adopt the final budget. That has to be done 20 days prior to the final approval. So on June 15th, we'll hold our regularly scheduled committee meeting and have another presentation for the final budget. On that night, we'll also hold a special voting meeting following the presentation for the board to adopt the final budget. So that's really where we set the timeline, on the 15th, and then you have to back in for that Act 1, where you have to advertise 10 days out, make the budget in the state Form PD 2028 available within 20 days for public inspection. And also, the 30 days would be the May 11th approving a proposed final budget. So this timeline here adheres to our currently scheduled meetings while also adhering to the Act 1 timeline. I'll also note that at the latest, based on the Act 1 timeline, the board must approve a budget no later than June 30th. So next up, we'll discuss some of the budget considerations. And this year's moving into the 21-22 budget, here are some staffing additions that we have built into this—this upcoming budget. We have one school psychologist, one speech-language therapist, 3.5 EL teachers, a guidance counselor, two-and-a-half network technicians, a media service specialist, and also a K-12 supervisor of arts, music, and theater. So next up, we'll talk about historically, what do we know? And this is the exact slide that was presented in the November—at the November 24th, 2020 committee meeting. And this just shows historically, over the past five years, the Act 1 index, the adjusted index, and the actual tax increase for the school—that the school board approved. So you can see back to 2016-17 that the school board in yellow across each of those years shows the actual tax increase that was implemented. In 2016-17, it was 0%, although the base index was 2.4 and adjusted index was 3.4. So as you work across, you can see 0%, 2.89, 2.5, 1.9, and 2.6 in last year's budget. In most cases, we try to stay within the base index to the best of our ability while controlling the cost of the budget. You can see, obviously, all the way to the far right that we—the final approved tax increase is to be determined for 21-22. So in line with the percentage increases in—in tax, you can see here, we're just showing the budget revenues and budget expenditures associated with those school years. What you'll notice, if you compare the two slides to each other, is in the previous slide, we had a five-year trend. In this, we show a sixth, showing the 2015-16 school year. The reason for that is we want to paint one picture of showing the impact of a 0% tax increase. In 2016-17, we had a 0% tax increase. And you can see the bounce to budget. We assigned $6.5 million use-of-fund bounce to bounce the budget, meaning our expenditures exceeded the revenues. Now, if you look back one year, 15-16, you can see we only were budgeting a use-of-fund bounce of $2.5 million to bounce the budget. And if I were to continue to go back for about three, four years, that was a common budget practice in Upper Arby, where they would budget all the way in 2.5 consistently use-of-fund bounce. The idea there was, historically, you knew that you had a certain amount of turnover in Upper Arby. in Upper Darby. So every summer, or even throughout the year, there was turnover in staff. But improving budget practice, they budgeted 100% of staffing, because the best-case scenario, you want to make sure all your staff stays with the district. But knowing that the historical expenditures really came in under, so it was a comfort level of being able to budget right there, knowing that, in most cases, you were not going to actually experience the use of fund bounce, but it was the budget practice that was in place. What you see when they went to, when we went to a 0% tax increase, is a $4 million spike in the use of fund bounce. Since then, and then, there was actually a little bit of a ripple effect in the following year, although, and I'll go back a slide, in 1617, there was a 2.89% tax increase, which is the largest tax increase we've had in the past five years, but it was really to make up for that 0% tax increase. You can still see, on this 1718, you see that the use of fund bounce went up roughly a half a million dollars. There was still that ripple effect, although the tax increase went up more than we typically have in the past five years, they were still trying to make, we were still trying to make up for a difference in that use of fund bounce. Since then, you can see that we've been trending in a downward fashion, trying to make up for the use of fund bounce all the way back to 1617. So you'll see, it went from a use of fund bounce of $7 million to 6.8 to 6.2, in this current year, 5.3. So you can see the ripple effect of a 0% tax increase, and we're really making up ground. Now, you'll notice that the use of fund bounce with this proposed final budget is actually higher than last year, and as we go through the expenditures, we'll really dig into why that is. And it's part of the way the budget was built on purpose. And here's some of the reasons why. So some of the major assumptions are, right now, we're working with a 2.6% tax increase, and that's within this proposed budget, which is the base index for the current year. It's also the same tax increase percentage-wise that we used last year. I want to note that, as far as funding goes, we budgeted for state and federal funding. We kept everything just about at budget neutral, meaning no increase, no decrease. If you remember the last year's presentations, in the midst of the pandemic, no one really knew what state funding was going to be. What they told us was, it had to be at least what they called level funding, but level funding really meant that it was going to be no less than your prior three-year average, which, in most cases, is a decrease, because your prior two years were typically less than the past year. So I'll note that, currently, the only information we have from the state is Governor Wolf's Proposed Basic Ed and Special Ed Budget. If Governor Wolf's Proposed Basic Ed Budget, or Proposed Budget, just generally speaking, were to go through, we stand to have a $25.9 million increase in basic ed funding, and a $2.3 million increase in special ed funding. So you could see what that would do for our budget, if that were to go through. With that said, it's most likely not going to be approved. Everything that I've heard from the day that it was announced, was, there were even some, the Republican House, there were people who came out and said, it was a non-starter, that the proposed budget was absolutely a non-starter, and these things were never going to get funded for this year. So, with that being said, to stay on the conservative side of things, it's likely that we'll actually get level funding. I'm hoping no less than, and optimistically, hopefully, we find some increase that'll go through the fair funding formula, which will only better our situation. But, like I said on the previous slide, you see, we went from a $5.3 million use of fund bounce to 6.8. This is part of the reason. If the state funding is to go up, it'll immediately impact that and bring us closer back to that use of fund bounce that we are in for the 2020-21 school year. I'll also note that there's been a lot of talk about charter reform, and the tuition calculation, and how that would work out. I'll note that we are not accounting for any change in that law, because, at this point in time, we're not sure where that's going to go. And we'll talk, again, later about that in this presentation, but if there were any kind of charter reform or standardizing of the actual tuition rate statewide, the likelihood is that it would positively impact our budget. There's been some conversations around coming up with a flat tuition rate, say of $9,500, which is lower, about 500 or so, between $500 and $1,000 below our regular ed rate, and significantly lower than our special ed rate. So if that, if something like that were to be implemented, you immediately would see the savings on the expenditure side of the budget. But at this time, we don't have enough confidence to consider having that built into a presentation. I'll also note that we've, you know, we've gone back and forth about our model, our educational model, being, you know, in-person, hybrid, all virtual, the options that we're going to provide our families. This budget allows, currently, for us to continue with the Upper Darby School District asynchronous cyber program. And I'll just note that that, in itself, is a $1.3 million cost, which does not include, previously, the Pearson software. So we used to have, or we have, the Pearson software licenses. Over the pandemic, I give, again, Christine Kelly and her team, and the curriculum supervisors that were here before you in the previous meeting, a lot of credit for the amount of work that they put in writing curriculum, so that we can move away from the Pearson software. So this $1.3 million is staffing to actually run the program, not the software. That software was removed from the budget, in comparison to the current year's budget. This budget does include, which we've discussed in a previous presentation a couple months ago, the issuance of a new bond, the 2021 bond issuance for continued capital programs, and to continue in the, on the path that we've been going down for improved capital programs. I'll also state, this does not include ESER funding, at all. We are not including that in the budget, which is one of the major reasons why you'll see that increase in the use of fund bounce. We're building this budget as if ESER is not part of it. The reason being is, ESER is one-time money. It will go away. So we want to try and keep our budget as consistent as possible over the years, even with the ESER funds. So what we've done is, and you hear these, you know, you heard presentations earlier tonight, about how we're going to pay for these curriculum items, and how we're, we've been coming to the board and discussing how we're going to use the money. You're going to hear a presentation from Marvin tonight, about how we're going to attempt to use the ESER funds to improve our HVAC systems and ventilation. The idea is, we don't want to build that into our general fund budget, they're one-time costs. If you do that, you're inflating your revenues, your expenditures, and falsely, really, creating a comparison that will forever have to be justified later. So the idea is, when you deal with any kind of federal funding, whether it be Title I, IDEA, or ESER funds, one-time grants, they all work on what's called a matching principle, from an accounting perspective. So what you do is, you match every dollar of revenue to every expense. So I spend a dollar, I earn a dollar. So what we do is, that's a zero impact to your budget. You're always going to match the revenues to the expenses. So when I go back to that previous slide, and I talk about the impact to a use of fund bounce, although it's not budgeted there, as we use those funds, it will not impact the use of fund bounce. That being said, we also have areas that we've focused heavily on in ESER. Two of the main issue, areas are curriculum and technology. What we've done is, without having to, you know, somewhat reduce our curriculum and instruction and technology budgets, and when I say that, I'm talking about purchased materials, not people, purchased materials, so supplies, technology supplies, softwares, different pieces of material like that. We've tried to keep those budgets intact, going into this year, all knowing that those funds are really going to be coming out of ESER, but when ESER goes away, I still have it built into the budget, and I'm not coming back to the board saying, hey, I presented this budget in 2122 that showed this great savings, and now I need you to add 2, 3, 4 million dollars back to the budget, to get us back to where we were in 2020 and 2021. So those are built in, knowing that those expenses are going to truly be utilized through the ESER funds. So that's why I say, you'll see that use of fund balance went up a little bit, but that's how we worked that into the budget, so that it, we kind of moved things around to make sure that we're positioned for future years as ESER goes away. So all of that being said, here's a breakdown, when you compare the 2020-2021 final budget to the 2122 proposed budget. And you'll see the first line, revenues, and there's an asterisk next to it. That's revenues net of the tax increase. We typically show this every year, where we show here your revenues, and then here's the additional revenue, when you get down a couple lines to the tax increase. So let's just focus on 2021-2022. You have roughly $209 million in revenue, just about $219 million in expenditures, leaving your expenditures exceeding your revenues by 9.5 million. If we account for a $2.6 million, or 2.6% tax increase, it equates to a $2.7 million increase in tax revenue, leaving us with that $6.8 million use of fund bounce. And again, visually, you can see it side by side, the 5.3 of the current year use of fund bounce, versus the 6.8 of potentially next year. And I'll also state that, and this is where, kind of goes back to my previous point, the 2020-2021 budget, we did not budget ESER funds. Slightly different reasoning, back when we were going through this process last year, we weren't sure how much we were going to get, where it was coming from, and quite frankly, as we moved through the year, additional grants came up. Originally, it was CARES funding, then it became GEAR and ESER I, ESER II. Now, we're talking about ESER III. Along with that, there was CARES money that came from the county. So there were all types of things that had come, that if I had tried to project that in last year's budget, we would have missed the mark. It was cleaner to make sure that we kept our general fund budget intact, as if we were opening schools in a regular way, so that in the future, we're still set, and we are not taking steps backwards. So every year, we always show the community and the board, what's the impact of a tax increase? So just like last year, this year, we're looking at a 2.6, and as you go across, you can see the assessments in increments, 50,075, 100, 150, 200, 250, 300, $350,000. And then the dollar amount. This dollar amount is the annual impact. So, and I'm sure everybody, I'm sure this question's going to come up, as we start talking about assessments. This year is a reassessment, from a county-wide level. We've gone through the reassessment, and I'll just walk the board and the public back through what we've discussed in previous presentations. When you go through a county-wide reassessment, the idea is that it's revenue-neutral for the municipalities, the township, the school district, the county. So what happens is, you do a calculation, you look at the dollar amount that you collected for revenue in the prior year, you compare that to the new assessments, which, they naturally go up, because we have not had a reassessment in a long time, and then you do a reverse calculation to come back to a new millage rate. That millage rate is to have you be revenue-neutral. While you do that calculation, you also want to take into consideration different things that may have changed. So property that was exempt in the prior year, that's no longer exempt in the current year, or vice versa. Because if you don't account for that, you're not really revenue-neutral. You could lose revenue, you could gain revenue, or your lost gain, really. So as we went through that calculation, that's all considered here. I know in the past, the number that's always stuck out for the average taxpayer's property has been right around $75,000, and that's for a residential taxpayer. So we redid the math on that. Now, with the reassessment, the average homeowner's assessment is $129,000. So for argument's sake, we'll call it $130,000 assessment. So when you look at this, the impact to the average taxpayer annually, this budget would be around $62 to $93, because you're looking between $100 and $150,000 assessment. So all of that being said, here's a summary of the actual revenue of the budget, how it breaks out from a percentage perspective, when you look at local, state, federal funding, and other. So again, the total revenue is $212 million. Last year's, or the current year's budget was 209. This is a $2.5 million increase to the budget, which is a 1.2% increase. And you could see, on the right-hand side, obviously, local funding is really carrying the majority of our budget at 54%, the state's at 41%, federally funded at 4%, and other is 1%. So just to give a little bit more of a breakdown, when you look at that local funding at 54%, if you break that out, 48% of that is real estate tax, 5% is all other local tax, meaning that could be anything from interim tax, public utility, transfer tax, delinquent tax, interest, and various items as such. But you can clearly see that the major burden of all Pennsylvania schools really comes from local tax, local real estate tax, on a budget, at 48% for Upper Darby. So a more detailed breakdown is, this is the local sources that were referenced on the summary tab, and you could see each area, the taxes, delinquent taxes, earnings on investment, revenues from district activities, revenues from intermediate sources, and other revenues from local sources. That totals $113 million. Compared to the 2020-2021 budget, it's a $1.6 million increase, which is 1.5% of an increase. And the majority of that increase is coming from the 2.6% tax increase, which is, when you go back to the previous slide, it was dollar-wise, roughly 2.8 million, and you're seeing only a $1.6 million increase. That's because there are other areas in the budget that we are actually reducing revenue. One of the main ones is interest. So interest rates have really fallen out. Most recently, I had a conversation with one of our financial advisors, one of the investments we were in was earning one basis point, .1%. And they called me to let me know it was dropping down to .02% at this point. So with that type of shift, where we used to earn hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest, you know, this year, you're dropping down to tens of thousands of dollars due to the drop in interest rates. Hopefully, they go up by next year, and will outperform the budget, but at this point, conservatively, we had to reduce the interest earnings. So those, and the other areas of reduction of revenue are delinquent tax and transfer tax, just on projections that we see now. Between those three, you're talking about a million-dollar decrease in revenue, which is where it offsets that $2.7, $2.8 million increase from the increase in taxes. Next up would be the state source fund, so you see the basic ed, special ed, revenues from noneducational programs, state revenue, which is RTLG, that's Ready to Learn Grant, and others. And then you have the Commonwealth of PA revenue, which is SSR, Social Security, and PISers, which, we get a reimbursement portion for all the expenditures that we pay out for employees on the fringe benefit side for Social Security and PISers. So over the current year's budget, that's a million-dollar increase in revenue. The majority of that is being driven by the 7,800s there, which are the Social Security and PISers, and also, there was an increase in our projected transportation subsidy, which I will give all the credit in the world to Mr. Marvin Lee and his team with Forest Harbor, working through our process of submitting for subsidy through transportation. We've done a lot of work, and I'll also give the board credit, because they allowed us to go out this past year and look at a new routing software, and while going through that, and with our new team in place, we've been able, they have been able to create efficiencies using that software that the board provided them, to an extent that they actually increased the budget here by $650,000 of revenue. So there were other areas where we had some drop-offs, and Marvin and his team were able to provide that going into this budget, which is a very big deal, and, you know, he can't get enough credit in the world, in my opinion, to be able to pull that off. So the next two areas here are federal revenue and other revenue. Again, as I stated in the assumptions, we try to keep our federal funds level-funded as well, so you'll see, it's at .1%, it's $6,000. It was a, you know, slight adjustment in the allocations, but negligible on an $8.5 million budget line item. And again, for federal funds, at this point, we're being told we should expect level funding. In the beginning of May, Wendy Elgar, our Director of Federal Programs, will receive our projected allocations for next year. So we're hopeful that they increase, but for the time being, we're going to keep those level-funded, just like we are basic ed, because there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of information that's coming out that we have at this point to justify any increases. And then you'll see a reduction in the other revenue. That reduction specifically comes for that $9,300, what's called inter-fund transfers in. That $900,000 was the, we put a reduction in of $200,000, so you'll see a 6% decrease over the current year budget. That's directly associated with food service. So in a normal year, what happens is, the district charges the food service fund for overhead costs, and we equate it to about $1.1 million in expenditures that the general fund picks up, and then we charge back to the food service fund. and then we charge back to the food service fund. And we justify every dollar, so that when we go through our food service audit, it's, everything is accounted for. Based on the trends of where we've been for food service and how we're operating, it's slightly different than a normal school year. And, you know, I know that last year, as we went through the audit, that number was not 1.1 million. It actually was closer to 900,000. It was $894,000 for the 1920 school year. So a $900,000 mark two years out is more of a realistic number. You know, and if we were to get back to a full, normal operation in food service, depending on the expenditures it takes to run it, we would be able to allocate that and potentially outperform that item on the budget. But conservatively, I think we're going to be closer to that $900, or $900,000 mark. So now that we've gone through the revenues, here's the expenditures. On the expenditure side, you're going to see, this is a, I'll do two high-level reviews. This as the category, and then the next as an account function level. At the, at this category level is what's called function, the function level. So you break down instructional, support services, non-instructional, infrastructure, depth service, prior-year expense issues that may come up later in the year, capital reserve, and then contingency funds. So you'll see, obviously, as a school district, 67% or 2/3 of our budget are instructional, and 26%, a little bit more than a quarter, are on the support services. So the lion's share of our budget is obviously the instruction and support services that are provided to our students. This is another breakdown of that 218, almost $219 million. And this is broken down in three major areas: salaries and benefits, purchase services, and then supplies and others. And you'll see here that the majority of our costs, 70%, are salary and benefits. Obviously, the thing that keeps this, you know, organization moving are the people. So all of those expenses are, you know, it's 70% of your budget. It's also dictated by contractual language. We have contracts with multiple different unions, the teachers' union, support union, transportation workers, and then contractual obligations to administrators and all other support staff. So in this case, we came in at a 1.9% increase over the current year budget, and that equates to a $4 million increase in total. And this is the total expenditures, went up 1.9%. So we'll dig into those three areas here. So salaries and benefits, and you'll actually see that it's a 420, well, about $430,000 increase over the current year budget at .3%, which seems odd. I'm telling you that we have 70% of our costs are in this area, and that they're all dictated by contractual obligations. Our contractual obligations typically are negotiated to stick around our Act I index, which did occur for our salaries. But on our health side, specifically our medical and prescription costs, were significantly lower than the current year, due to the fact we are self-funded through the healthcare trust, and the healthcare trust has been running extremely well. And this year, we actually had a decrease in our projected cost for next year, because the rates went down. Some of that's dictated by, you know, the pandemic. A lot of people weren't going to the doctor. So unlike a, you know, let's say a Fortune 500 company who, you know, goes to IBX and buys their healthcare, they may pay a flat dollar amount per person, regardless of what the person uses. In our case, we pay into the trust, the fund stays in our account, and only the exact cost. So I go to the doctor for a physical, my doctor bills, that is a dollar-for-dollar cost, straight to the trust, just like every other employee in the district. So if I don't go to the doctor, that cost doesn't exist. So what happens is, we'll have reserves built up at the trust. And then, once you get to a certain point, they have different calculations, evaluations. They go through actuarial evaluations on the full trust, and they come up with the cost. So in the current year, the cost for the entire trust, the renewal, was negative. So a decrease for the cost. In addition to that, the district is, has our reserves to a point where in that formula, you have a secondary portion to that calculation, and we're at a point where we have an additional negative adjustment of a certain percentage point. So in that, the reason why you're only seeing a $430,000 increase in this area is although the salaries went up, the benefits went down almost identical. They were very close to each other. So what really drove a big portion of this budget, and is very positive, the savings in the healthcare was able to offset what usually is our biggest increase to the budget in salaries. So the next area is purchase service. So you'll see a $3.3 million increase. So although very happy about where our salaries and benefits landed, and the fact that we didn't really have an increase on our budget, in this area, we had a 7.3% increase. Now, you see the little red asterisk and the indication down on the bottom left. The 500 codes there, other purchase services, what's included there is actually tuition costs, outside placement, APS, charter schools, virtual charter schools, brick and mortar. In that area alone, just charter schools, we had a $2 million increase to the budget, based on projection of enrollment and the tuition costs. Kind of loops right back into that previous comment earlier in the presentation of potential charter reform and the, what it would do to our costs. But that 3.2 million there, or 3.3, 2 million of it is specific to charter school funding and the cost that we incur. So I'll move into the next slide, and we're going to kind of segue out of this section, and we'll circle back and just let Dr. McGary speak a little bit to the charter schools and how that's impacting our budget.
Craig, awesome job. I appreciate the hard work that you put into this, and the leadership of this board to be where we are. While nobody wants to see any discussion on the tax increase, it's positive to see that we're in a healthy position as a school district, which, you know, right now, surviving this pandemic is good. What I'm about to go through continues to be, you know, kind of an anchor on the school district, dragging us down and holding us back. On Slide 7, Craig really did a great job presenting all the bulleted items. What we have in the budget that we've kept in there that's open for discussion, not just tonight, but moving forward, is years ago, many moons ago, I've been here for a while, we've been worried about competing with charter schools for a long period of time. One of the greatest areas of growth and one of the greatest areas of concern is in cyber charter schools, and the lack of real reform or any real legislative action recognizing the money generator that that business has become. What Craig alluded to earlier is this constant conversation. I know Don Fields is online, he's brought this up many times, and many of you on the board have as well. This discussion of a, kind of a flat rate. So many Pennsylvania school districts have gotten together. I'm a member of a urban collection of school districts called the Plus Caucus. We meet pretty regularly, and we're talking about holding a meeting here in Upper Darby to advocate for more fair funding and for more conversations, holding a forum here sometime in the near future to pull the superintendents from across the Commonwealth together to talk about just how hurtful the lack of reform is on public schools. And these are some slides, some factual slides that we'll go through. But on Slide 7, as a school district, many years ago, we've tried to compete with charter schools. There was a period of time when there was a resolution passed by several superintendents ago to actually pay people to recruit students back from charter schools. And for every charter school student you returned, you would get a $250 stipend. That was one strategy that was voted on and approved by the board several years ago. Really didn't work a whole lot, because nobody was really going to go bang on doors and do that. But there was this idea of any creative way to try to recruit students back to the school district. Most recently, I say recently, but it's been five or six years ago, we attempted to move into our own competition with cyber charter schools. And so we attempted to create our own online academy. At that time, Ms. Kelly and I were trying to do it within the money that we had. And I just want to give you a ballpark dollar. We had a program in the school district called a home study program, where students who had discipline issues or some academic concerns could move towards some kind of a home study program, where they would have a tutor that would meet with them, and there was a stipend amount to check in with those students as they were receiving their education. That process was about a $200,000 budgetary item. At the time, we tried to compete with charter schools that were ballooning upwards of $6, $7 million a year, which is, we're over that mark tonight with this presentation. We put about $189,000, Ms. Mitchell, I know you remember it. We spent $189,000 on a product called Pearson, Pearson Canexus, that purchased 500 licenses that were meant to be used to recruit students back from cyber charter schools. What we learned through that process is, as many public school superintendents will tell you, we can provide an education, a good education, for far less than our competitors. And so what Craig Rogers presented earlier is that superintendents have come together and have asked legislators to lobby for the following: a flat rate. They do not have the same overhead, they do not have the same cost that we believe that we do at operating our day-to-day operations. A special education cyber school student can cost $30,000 a year to a school district. And so there's a consideration of a flat rate of about $9,500 that could equate to a couple million dollars in savings to Upper Darby School District, if that were to go into play. On Slide 7, we have kept in the budget 1.3 of the 1.5 you normally have budgeted for an asynchronous online process. We have about a $200,000 savings, because we've removed the Pearson product. This is in the budget, because there is concern that teachers are concerned about teaching asynchronous, synchronous, and in-person instruction. And I want to say publicly and here to the board, education is more than just being in a school, working with students, and caring about them now and educating them. It's now, we are competing in a business model. And so we have to come together to recognize that if we want to keep money here in our schools and compensate our staff and do those things, we have to recognize that the educational environment has changed. We are concerned that coming out of this pandemic, that there will be students who will want to learn in a virtual model. I want to be clear, because I promise the parent groups that Mrs. Buford and I have been a part of having conversations with, we believe that the best educational model still is having students in schools, working with our teachers and our resources that are in person. In-person instruction is the best way to go. We would be totally ignorant, however, if we didn't recognize that there are parents and students who appreciate some of the flexibility that this pandemic has caused. There are some students and some families who thrive in that virtual asynchronous learning. And so now we're at a crossroads where either we want to compete, because it doesn't look like there's any reform coming for cyber charter schools or charter schools in general. And what will happen if we don't recognize that competition or there's no reform? On this slide, you will notice that the percentage of tax dollars that go away, even if you do not have a charter school in your community, the amount of money that goes away from your community to support cyber charter schools and charter schools in general is significant. 37 cents of every dollar goes to support those. Remember, there's no state funding increase here, there's no budget, no conversations with us. They're getting a 10% funding increase. And the dollars that we're getting on a federal level, they were also, they were also receiving, okay? Very important that the charter school is taking a significant bite out of the dollars and the resources that we have. It's also that they don't play by the same set of rules. Both of these next lot of slides will tell you. Charter schools are exempt from special education funding formula. They're exempt from teacher evaluation requirements, meaning we have to evaluate our teachers using a set criteria. We have to use, up until the pandemic, data. We had to account for that data. Charter schools are exempt from that process. They have fewer certified teachers, and they are also often run by private board of directors. And obviously, they don't perform as well. I bring this up, because it's a competition. It's become a competition, and some are making some significant dollars in this competition. We have to recognize, are we going to provide asynchronous, synchronous, and in-person learning, or not? And so in our budget, if we wanted to look at a potential savings, there is $1.3 million that is in there to support asynchronous instruction. That is an area to consider, that we would look at, how can we support our current teachers to keep that up and running, whether it's a financial support or a review of that. We've kept that in the budget, because we know that there are a number of parents in our community, Dr. Manfree, myself, Mrs. Riccioli, Mrs. Frank Salerno, we've met with parents who will keep their students in asynchronous instruction, who will keep their students in synchronous learning. To be clear, that $1.3 million in the program that we have right now does not provide direct instruction. It provides stipends to teachers who coach and check in and monitor students in an asynchronous platform. The students do the work right prior to the pandemic, using a Pearson product. We are able to move toward our own platform with our own curriculum, so the $1.3 million provides stipends to teachers and staff to work with students in an asynchronous model, using our own curriculum. We are moving away from the Pearson product. And I wanted to make you aware, that's a consideration that's in there. Because, as Craig pointed out, we are over $6 to $7 million right now in charter school cost to the budget. And Craig is telling you that there's another additional potential for a $2 million or more increase cost in the budget. So now we're looking at close to $8 to $10 million in our budget for charter schools and cyber charter schools.
I'll just, I'll just, so I'll just add, the charter school, the dollar amount, and I know that we always get, we're always looking at where we're at right now, where we're at right now. And Dan, to project out two more years, or through this year, in the next year, it's actually projecting out to 12 million. So like, as we build out, Dan is looking at the 8 to 10, speaking of what's going on right now. Now, you have to consider the additional $2 million amount. So that's where Dan and my number, you know, jive right together. So just to jump right back in, the next item or area here would be the supplies in what we call other. So you have supplies, property, other objects, and other financing. What I'll say is, we have a, what's a 1.8% increase, it's $310,000. This is where we have some, you know, some of the more, you usually don't see much coming through this area. You have a lot of, you know, your bond payments, the interest and principal associated with that. We have what's called contingencies built into the budget there. And then we also have any type of capital reserve transfer. So I want to touch on a couple of things, although they're not specifically laid out, they're built into these numbers. That $310,000 increase, similar to the previous conversation, there's, you typically have an increase and a decrease in certain things that offset each other. So in the case of the revenue where I referenced Marvin, you know, helping with transportation to help offset some of those other areas, or the tax increase offsetting the decrease for interest revenue, this area is somewhat similar, although on the expense side. What I'll say is, and, you know, this really is in a, you know, to the board's benefit and hard work. You know, I stated earlier that we're including the cost of a new bond. Yet, in this budget, we have a decrease in the cost compared to the prior-year budget. So it's actually a $230,000 decrease in expenditures, even though I'm adding in the issuance of a new bond. Why? It seems a little confusing. There's a couple of things the board was willing to do and helped us move in that direction. When you look at what we budgeted last year compared to how we issued the bonds, and also funnel in the idea of how we lap what's called lapping debt, meaning as old debt comes off your books, you build it into the payment bubble when you lose the, when the debt payment goes off. So with the timing of last year's bond issuance, we actually saved the district a lot of money. And we were able to build it into a payment structure that really benefited this budget, last year, or the current year's budget, next year's budget, and then will help us level out those increases moving into the future. So it was, you know, very beneficial for the district and the way that things played out. So it really, it helped us in that area. One of the other, now, I'm showing an increase here, I'm talking about where we saved. But one of the increases we're putting back into the budget, if you remember, in prior years, we were budgeting about a half a percent tax increase to go into the capital reserve transfer. So it was about a half a million dollars. Last year, because of the pandemic, we were very, very conservative in our budgeting, and we were trying to find every possible area that we could to be able to limit expenditures. So we actually removed the half a million dollar transfer to capital reserve in the current year budget. The board approved that last year. I'm recommending we move it back into the budget to try and get back on that regular cycle, so that we continue to have a capital reserve account that can support a district of our size. The other area where we're increasing expenditures is the contingency. So most districts, and I think I brought this up in last year's budget presentation as well, most districts have, typically take a percentage of their expenditures and put it into what's called a contingency. So you're going to use that contingency for anything from, you know, horrible winter season, where you have, you know, excess snow removal. season, where you have, you know, excess snow removal events, or a, in our case, like this year, we had Highland Park where the generator went down. You want to be able to account for those things because they're going to happen. So in most districts, they look at it as a percent, 1%, 2%, you know, our budget's in excess of $200 million. Our contingency last year was at $400,000. That's actually less than the contingency of our surrounding school districts that have a, in some cases that I am very familiar with, you know, a quarter the size of the budget, and they have a contingency that's larger than ours. In an effort to be able to start building that contingency up, for instance like that, we did increase that, and that's part of the reason why you see the increase, even though I'm talking about the offset of the savings. I will tell you creatively, what we did was, instead of just increasing expenditures, we reallocated. So where I talked about using ESER funds for curriculum and technology, instead of taking those things out of the budget, we took portions of it and used it to build up the contingency while decreasing the costs. Because as I said before, I don't see us using all of the money that was there in those curriculum and technology areas, because we can use ESER to offset it. When you put that into your budget, that's how you calculate your tuition rates for charter schools. So if it's artificially a number, by moving it into your contingency, your contingency actually allows for a deduction to the, to that formula. It also gets us to a healthier contingency amount of about a million dollars, which is still less than, it's like 0.48% of our current expenditures, which although the dollar amount is a high amount, it's a drop in the bucket when you're talking about a budget the size that we are, especially with the schools, the number of schools we have, the age of our schools, and the aging equipment. So, you know, even with all the ESER funds that Marvin will talk about, we're looking at costs on that area in that next presentation that far exceed what all of the ESER funds are available for us. And obviously, our first order of business with ESER funds is instruction, and be able to improve the instructional model, make up for lost learning, and then the final piece of that is use what we have left over to help offset the cost of our aging facilities and the systems we have in place. So that goes through all of the revenue areas, the expenditures, and I just want to go back and we'll kind of finish how we started and go back over the timeline. So following this, we, our next board meeting is May 11th. You know, I hope that the board will go through with approving the proposed final budget. Please note, I know the board members know this, I'll say it for the community and anybody else watching, that we're following the Act 1 timeline as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. What that means is, this is really checking a box. You have to, the board is required to approve a proposed final budget 30 days prior to approving their final budget. So May 11th would give you in excess of the 30 days before having to vote on a final budget on June 15th. And I say that because, and we say this every year, this will not be the final budget. Numbers will change, we'll get more, hopefully get more information from PDE, from the feds, you know, hopefully positive information that will help impact this. We also don't stop building the budget. You know, there's a lot of work that went into this budget where it's, you know, we meet Marvin, Mike Casey is our Controller of Finance, Christine Kelly out of the curriculum office, Greg Manfree, and Frank Salerno, meet with every single one of our department heads and review their budget and what they're in charge of, and we go through each one of them, all through February and March, and then we circle back to pull all that information back together to give you the documents before you now. All of that being said, we can, we don't stop. We continue to evaluate where we are, any way that we can, you know, adapt the budget, and in most cases, we're looking to increase revenue and decrease the expenses in any way we can without negatively impacting the instruction of the students. So we'll continue to try and find creative ways to reduce the expenditures. I'll look back into the revenue as we find out more from the state. I'll also do, you know, we can continue to do dives if I find out that there, you know, there's some type of interest rate spike or something that's coming up, maybe I was a little too conservative in an area. We don't stop looking at it, so that when you get that final budget in, at June 15th, which again will be another presentation very similar to this, we'll discuss what were those changes, what did we, what did we go through, how did it impact the bottom line for the, for the budget? So again, May 11th is our scheduled board meeting, it'll, you know, the proposed final budget would be included in that meeting for approval. We, in that same night, you have to make the PDE 2028 available for public inspection. That's where 30 days out, you have to have approval of the proposed budget, proposed final, 20 days out, you have to have it out for public inspection. We just make it, if you're approving it that night, you might as well make it available to the public for public inspection, so we'll exceed that timeline. We'll do another discussion on May 25th at the committee meeting, hopefully we have more information by then. June 5th, no later than June 5th, we would post an ad, which has to be 10 days prior to the approval of the final budget, and again, June 15th, a final presentation and a final approval at a special voting meeting following that committee meeting. So I know I threw a lot at you, and I'm going to assume there are questions.
Hey Craig, yes, this is Don. Thank you very much, I'm going to give you a second to catch your breath before we open up the floor to questions. I did want to, I did want to ask real quick, before I go to the others, so one slide, 37 cents of every dollar of new tax increase goes to charter schools, so out of $100, let's say property taxes go up $100, $37. No, I'm not doing my math right. No, yeah, that is right, $37 is, is going to charter schools. And I just, I just wanted to be clear, if someone has, that's not all the property taxes, not that I'm trying to defend these numbers, but that's not all the property taxes that somebody pays. So if someone pays $3,000 in school property taxes, it's not 1,100 that's going to charter schools, it's just, it's new increase that's going. And I just want to be sure, I mean, it's still outrageous, I'm trying to measure how outraged I should be on this. So in that example, in my $3,000 example, exists, like that's, that's all of somebody's property taxes, is 37 cents of every dollar of that going to charter schools? Are we also saying that as well? Or is it just on the increases?
So just to be clear too, this is, as Dan was stating, part of the group that he participates with.
I can throw it to Dan.
Well, no, no, I'm just, I just want to point out that this, these slides, there's four of them, there are a handout that it's statewide, this is a, you know, they are not specific to just Upper Darby, it's an average wide across the state, just to kind of clarify, I don't think we, we had said that, but there is source information down in the bottom left.
Which is a point of curiosity, just a point of curiosity on my part, and we don't have to spend a whole lot of time on it. It's outrageous enough that this district is forced to increase, let's say, $100, the 37 of that, $37 of that isn't going to any, potentially isn't going to anybody in this district, it's going to a charter school, either a cyber charter or a charter school that's out of, out of our area. And so that's really kind of what I was getting at there. We don't have to dwell on whether it's the existing total property taxes, just people should understand that a good part of your property taxes is going to charter schools in the middle of the state, on the other side of the state, just going someplace else.
Yeah, I think, Don, just to, in the most simplistic way, you know, our, our budget numbers are, when it comes to tax increases are pretty consistent, so, you know, 1% equates to about a million dollars. So in a vacuum, if you're, if I'm telling you taxes for charter school expenses are going up 2 million, in essence, if you were just in a vacuum, saying that you need the revenue to bounce that $2 million, you'd be at a 2% tax increase to cover just the cost of the tuition increase.
Okay, all right.
This information is hasbo and across the state. That's just for charter schools. Remember, in southeastern Pennsylvania, there's another issue that hold harmless, your tax dollars are funding across. So if you, if you want us to, we can show you specifically the impact it's having here, what I've tried to say and provide the board, and Don, I appreciate you pointing that out. As the slide says, it's 37 cents of every, every dollar in property tax increases. We already have a significant impact on the budget, as Craig just said, each year percentage-wise, with the millions of dollars that right now, it's about 8 to 10 million, that percentage of money is going out of the district at a higher rate than we're spending in some situations on our own students in-house or in our own online programming. So my point was, we can provide the same, if not better, education in cyber education than charter schools can, and they're charging us far more money than Pennsylvania public school superintendents believe the real cost should be. Some costs are close to $5,000 to $6,000, instead of the $10,000 on average that cyber charter schools are for regular education students, in excess of $30,000 for a cyber charter school student who's in special education. So my point in bringing this up is, there's a significant cost to the taxpayers where those schools are not competing on the same playing field as regular public schools are. While they're called public schools, they do not have to evaluate their teachers the same way, they don't have to follow the same exact Pennsylvania value-added assessment data collection process that we do. There are far more differences in this system, as also as relates to cost. There doesn't seem to be as many checks and balances in place as there needs to be.
All right, thank you, Dr. McGary. Dr. Haig has a, has a question or a comment.
I just wanted to add that, that to Dr. McGary's point that charter schools are often billed as this cost savings to taxpayers, and I think what's becoming clear here is that that's just not true.
Thank you, Dr. Haig. School Board Director, War Savage?
Yes, thank you, Director Fields. Excellent presentation, Craig, as always. I mean, the, the way that the information, at least, is related to me as a board member makes sense, and now I'm able to share, as well as everyone else, share mutual understandings with our community members, and this leads me to this comment. Is there a way that we can package the most pertinent points of this presentation and share it with our state elected officials, chiefly among them being State Representative Margot Davidson and State Representative Mike Zabel? And I say that because I personally would really appreciate them if they haven't done so. Going on the record in support of things such as charter school fee reform, in addition to a couple of slides back, there was the proposed funding by the state. Yeah, right there, special, basic ed and special ed funding, and it's only proposed, and the budget's not likely to be funded like that, at that level, if at all. And then Dr. McGary was also talking about the need to compete with cyber and other charter schools, and that just, it just boggles, it boggles my mind, because when you're talking about competing, you're talking about a business sense, you're turning our most precious resource, our students, into a commodity, and that's definitely not what this administration wants to be doing, that's not what this district believes in, that's not what this board believes in, we don't believe in teaching students to test, and they are not commodities, they are assets to be invested in. And when we are taking money away from our students, our children, it makes catching up on those learning difficulties even harder and more challenging than they have to be, because a lot of the problems, rather, some of the problems that we experience later on in life as adults, a lot of those nuances can be affected, potentially in a positive way, with a really good reinforced public school or educational experience, and that does not happen when every year, we are holding our hands out, asking, can we please have some more of funding that quite frankly is due to us? And that's not counting the fact that, of course, we have the different one-time fusions of cash through ESERS and et cetera. That is one-time funding, and that is also a drop in the bucket, because we are underfunded at a clip of $20 million a year. And just this past week, members of the school district had, and with PCCY for equitable funding, I know Mrs. Curry, I believe, was a part of that, as well as others, and we also had a group of young people through UDTJ who were also at the state Capitol protesting for equitable treatment of public schools. So I mean, is there any kind of way that we can get, or even invite the state reps to, to consume this information and again, go on record for support of getting us the funding that we need, so that we don't have to continuously have these conversations where we're considering a tax increase that doesn't necessarily, you know, put all those funds into, say, a rainy day fund, or more, more investments into things that directly affect our teachers and our students. It's basically making up for the fact that the state isn't doing enough to pay their portion of the educational experience that they're responsible for. I know it's a loaded comment, but as a student, as an alumni, as a taxpayer, and now as a board member, I'm really frustrated by the fact that the state still hasn't done enough, and there are these opportunities clear as day to make this catch-up, but it just needs to be done. That's where I stand.
Yeah, Mr. War Savage, I appreciate your comments. As I alluded to a little, a little while ago, I'm hopeful. I participate with a pretty awesome group of superintendents from throughout the Commonwealth. One of them's a former high school principal, Chris Dormer, who's on that group with me, and we're kicking around the idea that we're trying to pull, even using technology, having some of us here, some of us from the western part of the state, all throughout the Commonwealth, joining forces, I haven't shared this yet with my team and Ms. Buford yet, but, so here we go. And we're going to try to invite the press and coverage to have this conversation, uniting the school districts, since we were able to get the ear of the US Secretary of Education, and then to invite folks like other national communication companies or newspapers to understand what we're up against. Pennsylvania is one of the, not only most underfunded states and public education systems, I will tell you that it's also considered the worst charter school law in the country. It's considered among the worst as far as how it's been handled. So there are, there are two different issues that I think are open for discussion.
So just to add that Dan's point, you know, Damian, I think that, that the slide that we have up, slide, it's slide 7, you know, from my perspective, and I guess it takes me back to a couple of years ago, we had a pretty spirited budget presentation where, you know, our previous, my previous boss and previous CFO of the district referenced the shame, and I'm not going to, I'll say it as that, the shame, the shame of what was happening from a funding perspective. And anybody that knew, you know, Mr. Grant, he didn't get animated like that in public very often, but it took a topic like this to bring him to that animation, and he was absolutely right. You know, the way he delivered it was, was great, it was, it was one of the, one of his best presentations. But this slide right here speaks directly to it. You know, Governor Wolf came out with a proposed budget that if we were to actually get this funding, that's all I'll ask for. If we, you know, if we were to actually be given the $25.9 million increase for basic ed, and a $2.3 million increase for special ed, I can't tell you what that would do for our budget and our students. You know, you go back and, and we revisit the same topics all the time. You hear ESER, and it brings back bad memories for people, specifically Dr. McGary. You look back at the lessons learned through what used to be the ARR funding, that's the last time you saw a major injection of one-time money, and how people used it. And now all of the webinars associated with ESER funding have now hindered the warning of, look what happened with ARR. People went out and paid staff, and then you had a major drop-off. Now they're calling it the cliff. Don't fall off the ESER cliff, that's what everybody is saying in all these meetings statewide. Something like this takes you back to a better place than you would have been if ARR never went away. You know, you hear about the reading specialists we had at elementary levels. We would be able to inject an unbelievable amount of support to all of our levels of education, elementary and secondary. You'd also be in a situation where, you know, this starts to level out that idea of local funding versus the local effort versus the state effort. You know, that would really level the playing field. I wouldn't be sitting here in front of you asking for a 2.6% tax increase. You know, there's, there's a potential there that you could explore the idea of decreasing taxes in a given year because of that influx of money. You know, that shows you that the, our budgets have been put on the back of our taxpayers. You know, we have to do the best we can, we can only increase our revenues based on Act 1, we can only increase taxes. We don't have another mechanism to bring more revenue to the extent you would need to stay in pace with your expenditures. So we play within the rules, and... So we play within the rules, and unfortunately, that's what we've always had to do. But Damian, to your point, this is the slide, you know, you would, sharing the idea that there is an elected official in our governor out there proposing this funding, you know, it's a shame that it did come out, that it was a non-starter. But this is really what it would take to put us in a much better place, and, you know, Dan's referencing different, you know, equity studies as far as funding, and where we stand versus other states in the country, along with the charter law. You know, we're not in a great place when it comes to state funding. So I appreciate your passion, Damian, and, you know, I will say that this is where it would be most important. It would be an absolute game-changer for this district, and I will tell you, it almost would be dangerous to give this kind of money to the creative people we have running this district. I get to sit here and talk about the finances and go through dollar-for-dollar, you know, I'd probably put half the people in the room asleep, or anybody, you know, we probably had our YouTube numbers drop off, because typically when people hear about numbers, they glaze over. But if you were to give this kind of money to our educators, the people on the curriculum side of the house, which is the majority of our district, Christine Kelly, Dan McGary, Frank Salerno, Greg Manfree, and say, what can you do with this? I would take that, those presentations you heard earlier, you know, from Kristen O'Neil and Bob Schwartz, and multiply it by 100. You would be able to do amazing things in this district with that kind of funding.
Thank you, Craig. Director Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Just in regards to slide number four, the budget considerations, staffing additions, I just wanted to know, this is like a sort of a slim list in comparison to other years. Sometimes we've had, like, options A, B, C, and D, or A, B, C, D, E, and I'm just wondering what the total is on that. And then also, I would love to see the last bullet point be a supervisor of performing arts, not just art, music, and theater, to include dance and other forms of artistic expression.
Yes, we have had internal conversations with that concept in mind. As far as the total staffing costs, or total staffing that we went through this year, and again, this is, you know, just based on needs, so I'll go through it, and I know John might want to jump in, and our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, who deals with me, Frank, Greg, Greg and John, and Frank Salerno over the staffing. We have a process in the district where we look at enrollment first, needs of students. One of the third bullet point items on there, I want to keep an eye on, as Greg and Frank do as well, because there's an increasing number of EL students coming to Upper Darby School District, that's number one. And remember, everybody, as our local township folks and others question the school district budget, remember, you are mandated to fund and support education in a unique way, right? So when township, I mean, community members start to ask, well, why is this, why is that? Special education, English language learners, there are state mandates and federal mandates of instruction that you have to support, which is fine, but there are costs associated with those resources. Things that we were requested of our administration this year, assistant principals at every elementary school. So all of the elementary school principals requested an assistant principal, along with a lead teacher. We simply can't afford that staffing at this point in time, not only short-term, but the long-term cost of that. Obviously, you know, taking that out of the mix, there was a request of over 52 additional positions of staffing in the school district. John, do you want to?
Dan, thanks so much. I think you captured, you know, what we went through, the process that we went through, and getting to this recommendation here. But I also wanted to mention that we currently have three network technicians serving all of our elementary schools. As we increase technology, obviously, we have to increase the number of repairs to the technology, so the need for or to increase the number of network technicians is a budget consideration and recommendation that we made as well.
So we have to go through a process that we, what we need that are really, starting with state-mandated requirements for students and staff first, and so you'll see on here, obviously, also concerns related to special education costs increasing out of this pandemic, as far as evaluations, extended school year services, speech and language therapists, and by the way, you know, psych, school psychologists, speech and language therapists are rare, they're hard to find. One of my concerns when I spoke to the U.S. Secretary of Education is just staffing and teaching positions in general. Because of this pandemic, there was a downward trend of licensed teachers coming out, just historically here in Pennsylvania, across the country. I wonder what this pandemic will do with folks coming out of school right now who are getting into this profession. You know, it's a stressful position to begin with. I think since March 13th until right now, it's even more of a stressful position for folks to take on some of these responsibilities. We're seeing teachers retire and resign because of this pandemic, where normally they maybe would have considered staying in. So this is really, to your point, Ms. Mitchell, the options A, B, and C. This is probably one of the lower options of the number of staffing requests that were asked.
Is this like a non-negotiable, we need all of these to meet the student needs?
Yes, we did not come out of the gate asking for a wish list. These are really staffing considerations that we need to service the students.
And just one more follow-up comment. I just want to remind the public, and the rest of the board knows this, but even with the proposed tax increase of 2.6, we can only raise $2.7 million with that tax increase. And that's really critical when you look at what the state, you know, what Governor Wolf proposed, 25 million. We can only raise, you know, at the base index, $2.7 million, and it just does not, it's not sustainable over the long haul. As you all know, I've been fighting for fair funding for way too long, and hopefully, one of these days, we're actually going to get it.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Director Haig, I believe, has a question.
I have two very quick questions, only because the, first one, Craig, you said that the assessments were the current assessments, but by current, you mean new then? Okay, that's what I understood, I just wanted to make sure. The second question was related to the healthcare cost savings. You said that we have essentially like a, some sort of like reserve fund, and I just wanted to make sure, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but that that reserve fund is taking into account that, having had a depressed level of spending, there will likely be a surge, and that, want to make sure that that reserve is prepared for that surge.
So, and I'll just, I didn't really get into it in detail, but the Delaware County Healthcare Trust is monitored and run, or not run by, it's run by the board, which each school district has a member and an administrator. So I sit on the board for the Delaware County Healthcare Trust. We have the advisor to the healthcare, and the administrator is Gallagher Benefit Services out of Radnor. The trust has been running extremely well, well before the pandemic. The district had accumulated a reserve before the pandemic, and why I say that is, we had historically been trending in a great direction. You know, it was a young trust that was formed, and they got to a point where they wanted you to have at least three months in reserve. Once you got past that and started building up your reserve, in recent years, the past two years, I believe it is, they started accounting for your increase. So if the trust went up 4%, but you had a certain amount in reserve, you may have a 1% reduction to that overall trust increase. This is the first year where the trust had an overall decrease, and they build in contingencies in their projections for exactly what you're saying. You know, I think that the district's been, overall, the trust runs well for us, because historically, we've had a younger staff. You know, we do have, there's exposure, because once, in numbers, there's exposure. The more numbers you have, the higher likelihood that you may come into a counter what would be considered like a high incident issue, where a staff member horrible, you know, in a horrible situation may come up with something like cancer, or, you know, a premature birth. Those types of things are extremely expensive, and we've experienced those types of things where, and, you know, they report back to us as board members on the healthcare trust on a monthly basis. So they've done a fantastic job in managing the trust prior to the pandemic, and an even better job during the pandemic. So I'm confident in their numbers, I'm also confident in their reserve that we have, that we'll be in a good situation. There were also considerations of the idea of other areas that are lesser exposure levels, like your vision and dental, those types of areas where we kept those level funded versus decreasing costs, because there's just not as much room to play with, whereas your medical and your prescription have really, they drive the lion's share of the cost there. But great question, and yes, I have confidence in the numbers that they put forth for us.
Glad to hear it, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. I'd like to point out that, I don't know how long ago it was, a few months ago, a year ago, this board passed a charter school reform resolution. And four, there are 500 school districts in the state, and 400 of them have passed that, that's that resolution. And so there is a situation where the community and the population is demanding reform, but electeds, not necessarily our electeds, but electeds on other parts of the state are not listening. And this is, again, one of the scenarios where I ask the community, again, to call those friends and family that they know in other parts of the state, and ask them to reach out to their electeds, and ask for them to demand change on some, on these laws. So I hope that's given Marvin time to come up to the plate and start his presentation, because I'm eager for it.
Craig, I have one quick question, I'm sorry. Go back to 2021 bond issuance, capital projects, is that exact figure called out somewhere? I want to get slides.
So the exact dollar's not specifically broken out, but it's included in that second to last slide, under the 800, 900 functions. Part of it's the principal, and then the interest in 800 and 900. What we do is we project out what the first payment's going to be for that bond. So depending on where we issue or when we issue the bond, it'll build in like your first installment payment. Typically, it's a heavier payment on the interest side of things, because, like I said, we're going through a process where we try to lap our debt. So all of our new bond issuances over the past couple of years, we've really only been paying like $5,000 in principal, and the majority of it's the interest, but we keep the payments relatively lower. So it's not, to short answer is, it's not, it's built into that, if you add those together, you get $10 million there. It's built into that with a couple other expenditures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Marvin ready?
If there are no more questions, then yes.
I don't think we have any more questions. Go forth.
All right, thank you. It may not be my place to give credit to Craig, because he's my boss, but, but this budget document has been evolving for many months, and he's been masterfully managing the budget process, and I don't know how he does it. By the way, my presentation is very simple and straightforward. Good evening, everybody.
Thank God.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marvin Lee from the business office. This evening, I will discuss a unique opportunity to upgrade our existing HVAC units in our school system. As a part of the CARES Act, ESR funds, ESR stands for Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, were made available to K-12 institutions in the country. Upper Darby School District is a recipient of more than $55 million in three rounds of ESR funds. The funds are primarily designed to address student learning loss during the pandemic, but one of the allowed expenses is to address district's HVAC system to improve the indoor air quality in our schools. I'm going to actually read the actual language from the law. The ESR 2 and 3 funds can be used for inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, replacement, and upgrade projects to improve the indoor air quality in school facilities, including mechanical and non-mechanical heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system filtering, purification, and other air cleaning fans, control systems, windows and door repairs and replacement. We may not use ESR 1 for HVAC system, but ESR 2 and 3 are allowed to invest in HVAC system upgrades. We do not know the final budget yet, but we expect a significant amount of funds will be allocated to address the district's aging existing HVAC units. Why this and why not, why now? So when the business maker, business office make a presentation to something to the public and the board, we usually come back with detailed scope of services, budget, and timeline, but we were compelled to introduce this opportunity without too much detail, because the time is of the essence. As you can imagine, billions of federal dollars are distributed to school district in the nation, and there will be a race to secure the consultants, equipment, and the installer resources. We're currently talking to more than a dozen consulting companies about the best approach to this project, and Upper Darby School District is getting a lot of enthusiasm from the vendor community. We will continue engaging with vendors, run competitive RFP processes, and come back to you with a lot more detail, scope of services, budget, and timeline. Target areas. Because we have a very tight and finite timeline, we had to choose a project scope that can be quickly implemented. We will be focusing on replacing existing and aging HVAC units. We are talking about hundreds of existing unit vents and air handlers. Fortunately for us, we have a comprehensive building study that's already completed, which lists all the HVAC units, and we also have developed and have been maintaining the capital plans since fiscal year 2020. So we are in a situation that we can quickly implement those work, those project into work. How are we going to measure our success? So obviously, we want to improve the indoor air quality in our schools for the teachers and the students. However, we also want to achieve the following three items. Number one, on time and on budget. This project can be a multimillion-dollar project, so we want to make sure that we are on time and on budget. Minority participation. We'd like to maximize the minority participation rate in our project. Not only will we reach out to multiple vendors through vendor fairs and direct outreach, we will try our best to award the contracts to minority vendors. This point has been reiterated to every single opportunity we had with the potential vendors, we are engaging with the potential partners and organizations. Finally, we'd like to track and report energy conservation measures. We do not anticipate a huge reduction of consumption or cost, because we are replacing existing aging units, the like-kind units, but we will generate some savings, because we will be installing more energy-efficient units. This concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Oh, man, Marvin, that was awesome. I want to make a comment real quick on how critical this HVAC expenditures are, and how well-positioned, I don't know if this, I think Marvin already explained how well-positioned we are to make these changes. Lower Marion School District, it was in the news today, they had an outbreak in their second grade, in one of their second grade classes, in one of their classrooms, and they do attribute it to poor ventilation. This is a district with a much bigger budget than ours and way fewer students, and they didn't manage this. Dan will probably have a comment on that, but this is, this is, this is good money, and this is a good expenditure for our district, and I'm really glad, and I'm really pleased that you guys are on top of this and taking care of this. I believe Director, Dr. Haig, has a comment or a question.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. I know, I feel like everyone is just guessing what my question is, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it anyway, which is that, obviously, I'm excited that we're going to be conserving energy. I have to ask if there's any opportunity to move away from fossil fuels in some of these projects. I know that that is not a simple or cheap thing to do, but I also want to point out that there's also the concern that, long-term, we don't want to save money, and if and when some sort of solutions are put into place that make fossil fuels more expensive, and as renewables go down, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that's something we want to plan for as well, not just the short-term savings, but the long-term savings.
So the question about the fossil fuel, so the key about this project is about the speed, because we have to quickly replace, and we don't have much time to actually design for the renewable energies at this time, so we want to get in front of everybody and get ahead of the schedule and get the resources quickly as possible, because every school district in the nation- quickly as possible, because every school district in the nation will be going for the same resources. So I think the speed is really key, so we have to think about the renewable resources in the future, but at this time, I think it has to be one-to-one replacement with what we have.
And just to clarify, I'm not talking about like installing solar panels. I'm talking about converting, you know, gas and oil, essentially mostly heating, right? The air conditioning is already electric, and that's not, that's a whole separate issue. But I, again, I do get that these are not, those are not cheap changes.
I'll just add, and Marvin is correct, that timing is everything with this. We obviously have a finite period to spend the money. Quite frankly, it's, you know, that's been one of the biggest challenges with any of the funding we've gotten. You know, luckily, we got funding from the county, but we were given such a short timeline that, you know, you're moving so quickly to try and get these plans in place, get out, you know, kind of goes to the point of Marvin saying why we're bringing it to you without, you know, a absolute finite plan. He's kind of short-selling himself. The guy's been in meetings every day, all day, and I just keep seeing more and more energy procurement consultants coming through, and he's, you know, educating himself beyond what he already knew, which was masterful, to be able to kind of come up with the best way that we can move forward in this area. I'll say that, you know, in our, in our job, you know, we take direction from the superintendent and the board, and if the direction from the full board is that's the direction to go in, you know, we can try to do our best to do that. I'll say, following up to that, and I totally understand where you're coming from, but we could take a scope of the work, and Marvin referenced, he can't even tell you the full scope yet, because he needs a budget from me. He needs a budget, so we look at the $55 billion, and like he said, we have priorities before we get to the HVAC. We want to look at education, instruction, software, technology, all of those different pieces. I'm then going to come down to what's left, right? This conversation really got kicked off, because we found out about ESR 3, another $34 million. And you look at, what can you do with $34 million? We can go and replace a huge chunk of existing equipment that needs to be replaced anyway. Or if we go in the route of converting, you are going to reduce the scope as far as the global impact to the whole district, and start getting into a situation where we're looking at, well, which building gets it? How are we going to do this? Not being able to get as big of a bang for our buck. And I know you know that the cost right now is more favorable to be in the situation we're in as far as the fossil fuels that you referenced, and I totally understand, you know, that hopefully, you know, the nation is moving in a different direction. I just, my personal opinion, as far as trying to be fiscally responsible and trying to use the funds in the timeline that we have in front of us, as well as being able to try and make the biggest impact possible, you know, I do think that Marvin's recommendation is the best way to move forward with the cards that were being dealt. You know, he was joking with me in a sense, I'm thinking to myself, $34 million, we're good, we're going to be able to, like, let's replace it all. And he just laughed at me. He said, that's not going to be enough. So don't think in this presentation that we're going to be able to replace everything. So now, you know, I kind of got chopped down a block, thinking the impact may have been bigger, but it's just the cost of all this. And again, think back of all the increased construction costs, you know, things that used to cost one thing a couple of years ago have skyrocketed. And now you think about Marvin trying to get out ahead of this and try and hit the market, be one of the first to hit the market, to try and not have an even bigger increase of construction cost as we move forward. So I know it didn't, I know that doesn't answer the question the way you want it to be answered, but the truth of the matter is, you know, we kind of looked at each other when you asked that question. We've had the conversation three times now over the past, you know, from the day that he told me he wanted to present this topic, and we knew that that question was coming, and we did go through and try to vet it the best we could to have an answer for you. So, you know, that's where we are at this point.
I completely hear, respect and appreciate that. I would just comment that if, given that we don't have money to replace everything, prioritizing things that are already electric and that, where we know the efficiency gains are really significant already, that prioritizing those things and maybe somewhat actually deprioritizing getting a new fossil fuel, you know, appliance, or we don't even know what the term is for the burners and things like that, deprioritizing that at this point with the thought, I mean, so I understand, some things are just going to desperately, are in desperate need of replacement, and I get that. But I wonder whether prioritizing the stuff that's already electric, that where we can get the efficiency gains, and deprioritizing the fossil fuel stuff in the hopes, because I think, one thing that is, that I'm just wondering is, I would hate for us to make these decisions and then for federal legislation to come out in the next year or two, that all of a sudden, you know, gives us incentives to do things, and we're like, oh, well, we just replaced that, and we just put in a new gas burner on that, and oh darn, oh well. So I'll leave it at that. But I really, I do appreciate you guys. I know how, I know you, I know you think of me, and I know you are working really hard on this, and I really do appreciate it.
And we'll definitely take it into consideration. We are, you know, Marvin and the team, they're looking at the, exactly, trying to prioritize and to be able to build that into the priority schedule and take that into consideration. Maybe if there are two that are aged out at the same, same rate, and we have to pick one, then that helps in trying to identify which direction we may go in. But we are definitely looking at, we have some that are much older than others, and we want to make sure that, we don't want to replace one that may have had a couple of years left and then have the other one fail either. So, but we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Okay. I do want to, we should keep in mind that the goal here, I believe, with this money to replace these machines is so that we can get kids back in the building. And that'll probably be take, that probably should be taken priority over everything else. So where I am in full support of what Dr. Haig is saying, and the overall point, the way we get people back in these buildings, this is one of the ways we get kids back in the buildings, is upgrading these systems so that we can have kids safely in the classrooms and they're, and we're not, you know, recycling, you know, air with viruses and things like that. So I think that's the thing we have, that is the goal of this money that's being sent out, from my understanding.
Yeah, Don, you are correct, and as we go through this, I, you know, I guess we could have been a little more specific. One of the ones, areas that has a major, you know, is as far as useful life and where they are, you know, Marvin quickly referenced univents. The univent systems at, like, for example, Beverly Hills Middle School is older. This will give us an opportunity to look at a system like that, and those univents, each one of them, and I'll say it right now, an operating univent system in a classroom has a MERV 13 filter in it, which is hospital-grade. It's the highest recommended filter that we were able to put into our systems, so that the air is being filtered, filtrated through those high-end filters, which we use ESR funds to purchase those filters. This would give us the opportunity to have a more efficient and consistent univent in a building like that. I will say that due to the age, sometimes some of them, you know, a motor may go on one, another one, you know, so one classroom may, you know, be one temperature, and the next classroom may be slightly less regulated because of the age of those systems. So it is a twofold piece here. I don't want to downplay the fact that the district did a great job at getting, you know, the proper filters, and the MERV 13 filters in every classroom that we had, a univent or forced air circulated through a filter, they're going through MERV 13s. In addition to that, we were able to buy HEPA filters, standalone units, for every classroom that we deemed did have any type of circulation, air circulation issue. You know, we were hoping that was going to be more of a one-time purchase. Turns out, it's going to most likely be multiple purchases, because we now have to buy filters for those and continue working through that process. But that's where this money will still be set aside for that. So, you know, I want to rest, have you rest assured that we are and have been, you know, keeping an eye on the filtration, that the, this money is going towards, you know, improving the actual, you know, univent system, so that we don't have to deal with the broken-down motors, you know, and where we can add, we will. But, you know, with the age of our current equipment, it's really going to be a replacement project and not an implementation of, you know, brand-new systems being put in place that didn't exist before.
All right. Thank you, Craig. And I wasn't, I don't want anybody to have the impression that I was implying that we hadn't been making our classrooms safe. That part I knew. I just, I do know that in years past, we've only had money to repair some of these systems. And so now we have an opportunity to replace them, although not all of them, according to Marvin. But we do have an opportunity to replace some of these systems that have probably been costing us money to just repair, and so I'm excited about that. So unless you want to make a comment on that, if there's no other questions or comments, I would really love to get to the new policies.
I don't have any other comments, but at this time, if we move to the policies, I'll hand that over to Board Member Neil Desnorres.
Fantastic. Go for it, Mr. Desnorres. Mr. Desnorres, are you, are you there?
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute.
That's okay.
Okay, so for this meeting, there are changes to two policies and changes to an attachment on one policy up for consideration. The three policies impacted are Policy 004 Membership, a attachment is being added, or rather, a BOG is being added. Policy 810.1 Drug and Alcohol Testing for Covered Drivers, and Policy 810.3 School Vehicle Drivers. So I will note, as I did in the other meeting, that as policies are reviewed and updated by the district, gender-neutral language is being introduced. So first policy, Policy 004. For this policy, a BOG, 004 BOG 5, is being added, and this is a, both the oath that's new school directors take and the certification of that oath are contained in this BOG. So this is a new BOG, which contains the oath of office for school directors, the certification of that oath, and other information. The words in the oath itself have not changed. Per updates to Pennsylvania law, the new certification allows for a notary public to administer the oath of office remotely using approved electronic communication technology. I do not have and have not been able to locate the previous version of this document, which is not attached to the active policy in board docs. I believe that the changes from the prior document are the text in bold about remote notarization. And these will be evident, the new BOG will be attached following approval at the May board meeting. The only other changes to the text of Policy 004 are gender-neutral language. For Policies 810 and 810.3, these two policies are being updated to conform to changes in Pennsylvania law as follows. First, employees of the district who are licensed drivers are now allowed to operate on an emergency substitute basis, a commercial motor vehicle within the boundaries of the district, for the purposes of removing snow and ice, if the properly licensed employee who ordinarily performs this task is unavailable, and the district determines that a snow or ice emergency exists that requires such action, and the district employee operating such vehicle on an emergency substitute basis has a certificate of authorization from the superintendent or school board. And second, changes to the provisions for drivers with a commercial driver's license to reduce the time covered drivers have to report an arrest, citation, or charge from 30 days to 15 days, and clarify when the employer, that is the district, can take action against a covered driver reporting such an arrest, citation, or charge. So that concludes my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Desnorres. I think, Craig, I throw it back over to you.
Arada, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, so I'll review the agenda. Again, we had three items. First up was the 2021-2022 Proposed Final Budget, and we're asking for board action to move it forward to the May board meeting.
All right. Has everybody agreed to move forward to the May board meeting?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay.
Next up was the Improving Indoor Air Quality Through the Federal ESR Funds, which also we're asking for board action, and what we're asking for here is to give authorization to continue down the path of researching how we're going to implement this and the actual procurement method we'll use, and we will report those back to prior to asking for approving a contract of any sort.
Yes.
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 Finally, we have the three policies for board action that Board Member Neil Desnorres just reviewed.
Yes.
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 I now think I send this, thank you very much, Craig and Marvin, and everybody, great work tonight and great questions. And I think I send this back over to Board President Brown.
Thank you. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
A move.
Holdovers in favor? Holdovers in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. We'll jump right into our next meeting, our special meeting.
Should I?
Do we need a few minutes? It looks like we do. Okay, we'll take, we'll take a few minutes.
Do we? Do we? Okay.
All right. Thank you for your patience. The special school board meeting shall come to order. I would like to note that all school board members previously polled tonight are still present. There was a closed session on April 25th from 6:30 PM until 8:00 PM, and April 26th from 6:00 PM until 6:55 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For those meetings, there were personnel matters. Mr. Fields, the facilities report, please.
The facilities report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I enthusiastically move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none?
It looks like we have a comment from Director Desnorres.
Yes, President Brown, I am very pleased that the district is about to take a first step on a meaningful addition to educational capacity in the district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Director Desnorres. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries.
Round of applause.
We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will read both emailed and phoned comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit and must include the commenter's name and address.
There are no comments received for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. A motion is in order for adjournment of the meeting.
So moved.
Second in, David Neal.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Congratulations, guys.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations, guys.[1607.51]